Good evening. This is a meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we do the roll call, I'd like to introduce Mayor Pressing for a brief moment.
I just learned today that Deputy Tommy Martin, who was an officer in the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, actually had a lot of friends in the Urbana Police Department, and he worked here as investigator for the state police, and I would request that we have a moment of silence in his honor.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Present.
Ms. Stevenson?
Mayor Pressing.
Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Is there a staff report? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes of the previous meeting. We have the July 9 minutes. Is there a motion or any corrections?
A move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any corrections? Hearing none. Would all those in favor of approval please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The July 9 minutes are approved. Next, we have public input, and if you haven't yet, there are yellow cards on the back desk. If you'd like to speak about any of the issues on tonight's agenda, you can grab one of the cards, fill them out, and pass them to the clerk here at the left. She can pass them over, and everybody has a chance to speak for up to five minutes on topics. If you could say which topic you'd like to speak about, we're going to try to organize tonight's meeting by topic. First, the Carl issue, second, the civilian review board, and then other issues on the agenda following that. There are a few people who have asked to speak before agenda items this evening, so those people who don't want to speak at the time but want to speak now at the start of the meeting will have a chance. The first that I'd like to call forward to speak is John Thies about the Carl Street vacation issue. If you could come up and have a seat, say your name and address, introduce yourself, and you have five minutes to address the committee. Good evening.
My name is John Thies, and I live at 2005 Marrow Court in Urbana. I am here tonight to speak in favor of Carl's petition. My life and the life of Carl Foundation Hospital are intertwined. I was born at Carl, my children were born at Carl, and my grandparents and my parents have all had long relationships with Carl Hospital. In the case of my grandparents, Charlie and Lucia Weber, it is where they each took their last breath, and they lived very long and productive lives, in part because of the care that they received at Carl Foundation Hospital and Carl Clinic. In our lives, each of us have events which define us, and I would like to talk to you about one of those events for me, and in particular, for my wife. This is the first time that I've talked about this publicly, and so please forgive me if it's difficult. Almost two years ago, my wife suffered a cardiac arrest. It was the evening of Labor Day, 2005. Soon after we had gone to bed, I awoke to discover that my wife was not breathing and that her heart had stopped. Ninety-five percent of the people that suffer cardiac arrests die, and of the 5 percent that remain, a substantial portion of them have long-lasting brain injuries. It's a very debilitating thing. Our story has a happy ending. After being in a coma for a day and a half, my wife has completely recovered. And as I tell you this story, I want to be mindful of the many families who are out there who had a similar experience but who had a very different outcome. There is not a day that goes by when we are not aware of the great blessings that we received through this experience and of what might have been. I am here to tell you this story because it is a great story about more than just my wife's determination and about the faith that sustained her throughout, but also about the emergency services of the city of Urbana and what we experienced through the Carl family. And by that, I mean both the hospital and the clinic. It was roughly 11:25 at night when I awoke to discover that my wife was not breathing and did not have a pulse. I dialed 911, and from the time that the fire station on Philo Road received the dispatch to when the paramedics were at our door was about four minutes. As I performed CPR, turning the phone to speaker, I was reassured by the steady voice of the MedCad dispatcher who told me when I needed to run downstairs to unlock the door for the paramedics. Now, I was a college cross-country runner, but I have never run faster in my life than I did that evening, and that included turning off the alarm and hurdling a gate at the top of the stairs because of our infant daughters. We estimate that my wife was without a pulse for between eight and 12 minutes. At that point, her heart was shocked back to a normal sinus rhythm by the paramedics. At that point, we were taken to Carl Hospital with the Urbana Police staying at our house until family could arrive to watch our young daughters, who miraculously slept through the whole experience. We are, of course, most appreciative of the city services that we received that night, and I very emphatically want you to be aware of the good news about city services. This was a great example of that, and I don't miss an opportunity to tell people, by the way. We are also very thankful for the care that we received at Carl, where my wife spent the next week. It was at Carl where I saw my wife's eyelash move for the first time, indicating brain activity that we had yet to confirm. And it was at Carl where my wife awoke from her coma the following Wednesday morning, and the support that we received from Carl's staff during this time was just tremendous. Now, I could provide a lot more detail about this, but I think you get the point. The proximity and the sophistication of Carl Foundation Hospital and its staff was of extraordinary significance to my wife as she proceeded through her rehabilitation. It was with this -- it is with this background that I come here tonight to urge the city council to cooperate with Carl in its expansion plans, and in particular, to do all that it can to aid in the development of the Carl Heart Center. Our community will benefit so much from the cutting-edge treatment that will take place at this facility. It is really amazing that in a community our size, we have the ability to have a facility like Carl Foundation Hospital and, in particular, this heart center. I think that all of us who employ people in the city of Urbana, such as myself, benefit greatly from these resources. We try to attract people here, and one of the things that we talk about is the tremendous health care system that we have. By the way, many of those who suffer cardiac arrest do not have the advantages that my wife had. She was relatively young, very healthy, had no blockages in any of her arteries, had an excellent diet, was very fit and exercised frequently, and yet this happened to her. This is not true with many others who really need to have every advantage they can get. As I finish, I want to tell you a quick story. When this happened to my wife, of course, we had tremendous -- a tremendous outpouring of support and love from people literally around the world. As an example of this, I received a telephone call from a very good friend of mine, a lawyer over in Springfield. As was sort of typical, the call went something like, "John, I heard what happened to Terry. If there's anything that we can do to help you, if you want me to cover a hearing for you, if you want me to bring food," whatever it is, "I will do it for you." At the end, he said, "The same thing happened to my sister, and she died." And that was hard for me to respond to, of course, because we were so close. And I know that there are others that have gone through this, and as I said before, have had a very different result, and I'm always sensitive to it because it could easily have gone the other direction for us. It's my view that God's timing in these sorts of things is perfect, but that God works through others to bring His plan into fruition. In this community, I think that He works through Carl, and He certainly did so with my wife's illness. Please support them on this current project. It is my view that it is certainly worthy of this road closure and anything else that the city and you, the leaders, can do to see that this comes to pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do committee members have any questions for Mr. Thies? None? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, on this issue, we have Julie Cox, and on deck after her will be Chuck Plotner. Julie, if you could come forward. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the committee.
Thank you. My name is Julie Cox, and my address is 1700 Magnolia St. Joseph. I'm speaking here on behalf of Carl. Again, my name's Julie Cox. I'm a registered nurse with Carl Surgical Services. I've been a nurse for more than 24 years, and the last three of those have been with Carl. Carl has an excellent cardiovascular surgery team. We do -- every year, we do over 400 cardiovascular surgeries, and we recently opened four specialty suites that are geared just to the best care that we can give our cardiac surgery patients, and we're very excited about that. You guys may already know that heart and vascular disease rank among the top health issues in Champaign, and the prevalence will only rise as our population ages. When treating our cardiovascular patients, as the previous gentleman said, time is of the essence, and the response time is particularly critical. Studies have shown that patients who receive care quickly have a much higher survival rate than those who do not receive care as quickly. What this means for this project is that our catheterization labs and our surgical suites need to be in close proximity to one another. When a patient presents with cardiovascular pain and symptoms, we also need for them to be close to the -- where they come in, the emergency room and the helipad, and we need to get them to the catheter labs and the surgical suites quickly because it really can mean the difference between life and death. Put simply, the seconds count because the heart is just a very large muscle that requires oxygen continuously, and any time that this oxygen is disrupted, tissue death can occur. And like we say in the profession, that time is muscle. Unfortunately, I've seen in my career what can happen when response times are increased. Patients that we may have lost just a few years ago because of delayed treatment survive today and are able to return home to their families and their lifestyles much more quickly. I understand also that a suggestion has been made to keep the street open to traffic and build over the street, and my opinion about this is not a viable option for a couple of reasons. First, a bridge over the street would increase transfer times from the catheterization labs to surgery, and these seconds are critical to a patient's survival. The second point is that catheterization procedures take really precise movements through a patient's arteries, which are very small, and there is really not much room for error there. I wouldn't really want to be a patient undergoing a catheterization procedure when the building and the physician's hands might be shaken by traffic or disturbed by car stereo booming or other such street noises which could resonate. So kind of in closing, by closing the street and building the heart and vascular institute immediately adjacent to the existing hospital, we can meet the needs of our patients today while preparing for the needs of the community in the following years. In my opinion, this really is an issue of the health and well-being of the community. The city council has a duty to approve the street closing, the street vacancy. Please give this your most serious consideration, and place health over convenience. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Do the committee members have any questions? Dennis, one? Go ahead.
Hi, Julie.
Hi.
What part of the existing structure contains heart and vascular operation suites?
The -- these suites in the existing structure are in the Rogers Building, which is near the emergency room, over the emergency room.
I don't know what building the Rogers Building is.
I'm sorry. It's --
Is it in the new tower?
It's south of Park Street.
All right, so it's south of Park Street.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll have Chuck Plotner, and on deck Larry Sapp, if you could be ready. Mr. Plotner, if you could have a seat and state your name and address for the record, you'll have five minutes to address the committee.
Chuck Plotner, 3404 Florence Drive in Champaign. I'm the Director of Safety and Security at Carl Foundation Hospital. I've been a member of the Security Department for 17 years and for the past two years as Director, and I want to talk to you tonight about some safety issues along Kohler Avenue, between University and Church Street. These type -- I'm concerned about this for a number of reasons. First, during my tenure at Carl, I've witnessed numerous accidents along Kohler Avenue. These types of accidents include motor vehicle accidents with personal injury, motor vehicle accidents with property damage, and hit-and-run. And with the help of the Urbana Police Department, I ran a statistical report on the number of accidents at certain points and intersections along Kohler Avenue. And I had a handout, and on page three, there is some statistics here, and I'm just going to go through them real quick. The dates of reports range from 2001 to 2007. On University and Kohler Street, total of 45 accidents. Kohler and Church, there was a total of 11 accidents. Park and Kohler Street, 13 accidents, and at the 600 block of North Kohler, there were 19 accidents, which is a safety concern. Second of all, I'm concerned with family members of the emergency department patients and the patients themselves, who many times are sick or injured, have to park in the emergency lot and walk across an intersection through vehicular traffic, which again is a safety issue. And third, I've witnessed many near misses on Kohler Avenue when it comes to ambulance and motor vehicle accidents. All ambulances need to back into the ambulance bay off of Kohler Street. Ambulance vehicles, they have their flashers on, they have their reverse gear alert buzzers on, but there are vehicles that ignore this. They try to swerve behind a backing ambulance as they're trying to back into the ambulance bay. That does create a safety issue for the patients, the ambulance drivers, and the motor vehicle drivers themselves. I even took it a step further and did a little research on the location of ambulance bays at other central Illinois hospitals, and the following hospitals do not have their ambulance bays located immediately off of public street. Provena Covenant Medical Center in Urbana, Provena United Samaritans Hospital in Danville, Roman Hospital and St. Joe Medical Center in Bloomington, St. Mary's Hospital in Decatur, Sarah Bush Hospital in Mattoon, and both Springfield Hospitals, Memorial Hospital and St. John's Hospital. For the safety reasons of our patients and others, I believe it is important to close Kohler Avenue between Church and University. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Dennis?
How many of the other hospitals that you just mentioned require an ambulance to back up into a bay?
They can back into a bay but not off of a public street. Many of them have private drives that go off of a public street or a parking lot, sort of a -- just an area where they will pull into and back off into an ambulance spot.
So are you saying that all of the above hospitals in these other communities also back into bays? Is that standard practice?
They back into bays. That is a standard practice, but they don't have to stop on a street, kind of pull forward and then back up while other vehicles on each side of the ambulance are -- have to stop.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Plotner, thank you. Under the, you know, under the proposed scenarios, where will people going to the emergency room park, and how will they get to that parking lot?
I don't know the exact location where they're going to park at this point, but I know the goal is not to have them park or back into an ambulance bay off the public street.
No, I'm referring to, not to the, not to the ambulances, I'm referring to people who are, you know, say, following an ambulance or coming to visit somebody in the emergency room. Where will they, where will their parking lot and what will their access be to the emergency room?
I don't know exactly where that parking lot is going to be at this point. I mean, I don't know. Mr. Manz or Mr. Snyder may be able to answer that question.
I'll let the, they can just answer it when they get a chance, and I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other questions from committee members? Thank you very much, Mr. Plotner. Next, we have Larry Sapp, and on deck, we have Sean Williams, if you could be ready. Mr. Sapp, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Larry Sapp, last name is S-A-P-P. I live at 311 Ridge Road in Mohawat, and I am speaking on behalf of the ambulances. I am the Director of Arrow Medical Services and Arrow Carl Ambulance at Champaign, and so maybe I can give a little bit more perspective on that and clear some of the questions up as far as the ambulance bays. Arrow Ambulance offers 24/7 ALS ambulance service in a network of 11 ambulances strategically deployed to seven locations throughout Champaign and Douglas County. Annually, we receive about 11,000 requests to transport patients, and of those requests, we transport approximately 9,000 patients per year. Over 60% of the patients we transport request and are transported to or from Carl Foundation Hospital, the local Level 1 Trauma Center. On any given day, Arrow may transport as many as 40 patients into or out of this facility using the emergency department entrance located on Kohler Street just north of University Avenue. As you might imagine, our peak volumes, our peak periods correspond with busy traffic patterns around the community and at times when people are reporting to work or coming home from work, as well as times during the lunch hour between 11:30 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. Traffic traveling up and down University Avenue tends to be busiest throughout the daytime, and those choosing to turn north on Kohler Avenue run into congestion, and safety becomes a real issue. Please keep in mind that the number of patients that I've spoken of taken to and from Carl Hospital is only a small percentage of the actual ambulance traffic on any given day at any given time. Arrow is only one of many emergency services that use this entrance. Public traffic heading west on University Avenue and turning north on Kohler has very little warning of the possible traffic conflicts or room to maneuver when the area is congested with upwards of four, six, and at times even eight ambulances. I have personal experience of over 27 years of service of many near misses, and even within the past year, an actual accident that involved an ambulance that occurred as the drivers were attempting to maneuver their vehicles around, in front of, and in worst cases, behind the ambulances as we attempt to deliver the sick and injured patients to the emergency department. For those of you that are unsure of how this access area is gained, I'd like to just give you a little bit of a verbal picture. Essentially, the ambulance pulls up on Kohler Avenue adjacent to and parallel to the emergency department. They ensure that their emergency lights and warning devices are activated, then they turn across both the north and southbound lanes of traffic, aligning their ambulances with the bays of the department, and then back across and in front of the traffic into the ambulance bay. The emergency vehicles entering from the north, traveling south on Kohler, must actually cross into the northbound lane into oncoming traffic, then turn back across the southbound lane, again aligning their ambulances with the bay of the department and having to back across and in front of the traffic. On more occasions than not, the public vehicles are caught in a congestion, and at times, the drivers just become confused as these unusual maneuvers leave them unsure of what to do. In the worst-case scenarios, the drivers attempt to pass in front of the ambulances as the personnel attempt to cross the lanes. In the very worst-case scenarios, the drivers swerve behind the ambulances as the ambulances attempt to back into the bays. The congestion and confusion slows our ability to safely deliver our patients into the hospital, and as important, the safety of the public is now and continues to be an increasing concern. Again, thank you for allowing my comments this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Sapp. Next, we have Sean Williams, speaking in support of the Carl expansion. Sean, if you could come up and state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sean Williams. I'm with Kohler Banker Commercial Den and Shaw Realty Property Management. We manage all the residential houses owned by Carl Hospital. We are supportive of Carl's efforts to expand within the zone created in 1996 and hope that you will vote for the street closures so that they can move forward. We felt that we could best speak for Carl, excuse me, Carl Foundation Hospital's integrity as a landlord and corporate citizen, which is the reason for the overview which I'm about to present. Kohler Banker Commercial Den and Shaw Realty has managed the residential properties owned by Carl since 1992. Currently, the residential property portfolio consists of 41 houses. Six of the units have tenants through the Housing Authority of Champaign County. Two of the units are permanent reserved for the students working at Carl Hospital, and two units are provided to the city of Urbana for transitional housing and have been since 1992. Two houses, 702 and 706 North Lincoln, are awaiting the city of Urbana's approval for demolition due to the fact both locations meet the city's criteria for demolition. Carl has been extraordinarily meticulous as a landlord providing maintenance of the properties for the tenants. Specifically, the landlord provides mowing so unkept yards are not an issue to the city, and as a result, these are some of the best-kept homes in the neighborhood. Management has been very thorough in screening tenants and addressing tenant issues which promote good neighborhood relations. Carl has always kept the neighborhood informed of their plans by communicating via neighborhood meetings, delivering notices, and one-on-one meetings with tenants at least once a year. Carl has also been charitable to municipal and other government entities. Carl allowed the Urbana Fire Department to perform training sessions at 604 North Lincoln when it was being demolished to make room for the spine center. Carl allowed the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission to use 803 North Orchard for their safety inspection training program in early 2007. And finally, in 1996, Carl set up a special program with the city of Urbana for the city to inspect each of these homes every five years. We complied with those agreements, and under the program, all houses have been inspected three times since 1996. It is noteworthy that this agreement was set up in years prior to the new rental registration program that just went into effect, and Carl wanted to assure the city that they would be excellent landlords and keep the properties up to the city's standards and codes. In summary, based on our experience as property managers, Carl Foundation Hospital is and has been one of the most dedicated and cooperative landlords, and we have enjoyed working in partnership with such a reputable and conscientious client. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks very much, Sean. Next, we have Andrea Antolov, and on deck, Miki Menino. Andrea, if you could come forward and state your name and address for the record. Yep, you're up. And that's the last of the public input on the Carl topic in particular, so unless other people turn in yellow forms, then we would move on to the official presentation after these two speakers.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Where's the microphone?
It's the little black thing.
Ah!
Yeah, the thing that looks like the mouse is the microphone, so if you speak near that, we can all hear you, and everybody at home too.
Okay, I will try. I'm the only person here speaking with public input who's not from Carl about Carl. I feel so lonely. It's just been a parade of people in suits who are educated, well-dressed, articulate. I came here a little late. I see a singular file, a digital file up here. When I went online, once again, for this agenda, again, I saw Carl's presentation, and I saw nothing online. Yet behind me, this long parade of people, I see half-an-inch-thick binders with plants, and I'm not seeing substance, and if you guys are getting the substance, I'd like to... the substance, I'd like it to be online. I'll try and keep this brief. I know you've got a lot to do tonight. How would the street closings help or hurt the neighborhood? Well, I don't see the street closings, I see it as square footage owned by taxpayers. I saw a figure in the news gazette of 900,000. Maybe that's what it's worth, I think it might be worth twice that ultimately, real estate is worth whatever someone's willing to pay. A location, location, location. Is this the correct location for this facility? If indeed they need to do all this to do what they need to do? I don't know. Some of the things that have been said, doctors have to go from facility to facility. Wouldn't make sense to hire more doctors. I don't think that you can ever have too many doctors in a company this size. I know that if traffic is an issue, there's going to be more helicopters, which is going to hurt all the property values in the surrounding areas, maybe even the State Street area if this, if it increases threefold. I don't know. I certainly think it would be a concern to those people. There might be benefits if indeed this amount of money for those streets went, didn't go in the general fund. I would, you know, really like to see that money go towards staff for activities, organized activities for youth. You know, in the past, other people brought this to other councils and have been directed at the Park District. The Park Touristic does not televise their meetings, does not even have email contact for their board members. And, you know, I noticed that the city is very quick to take on Park District what seems like Park District responsibilities. Later in this program, there's a memorandum about the beautification of Sunny Crest. $30,000 for a four-inch diameter tree. And we don't have someone who can teach kids how to maintain a bicycle, fix a bicycle, mechanical skills, job training along those lines. You know, or, you know, the total cost here is projected 550,000 with a $20,000 annual cost. I would hate to see that, those funds go for this. That nice new development is there, I think maybe perhaps some of this should be theirs. You know, and, you know, again, trees, shouldn't this be a Park District funding? You know, when you say this line's overlapping. Yeah, I can't stress enough, you know, like 12 years when I moved here, I noticed with the Park District that there were a lot of kids not being served. The kids who shot at each other recently, 20 years old, were ten then. Maybe if they had had a place and staff and structure, they would have found other ways to express dissatisfaction, anger, that was more constructive. So, you know, if indeed this does happen, I'd like that funding addressed. I notice there's also going to be a projected light at Church and Lincoln. The other side of, the west side of Lincoln, at Church doesn't go through. I think once that up, it would just be a matter of time before it does. I believe, you know, that's going to change the dynamic of that area as far as traffic flow. Traffic has to go somewhere. There's lots of other places that Carl can build. Perhaps, you know, in Urbana, they could use them. I'm not sure what to do because again, I don't have access to a half-inch plan, half-inch thick binder plan. I'm just battling at this point, but I believe I've made my point. You know, there's another thing about healthcare. I'm glad to be really close to a hospital. I know if I have a heart attack, I will get immediate help. That's, that's a comfort, but I know when I wake up that I make too much money and my 80/20 plan with its high deductible, I won't own my house anymore. When my mother got sick, you know, I asked her why she didn't go to the doctor sooner. She was scared, she made too much too and she was afraid it would be a pre-existing, existing condition and she wouldn't get treated. And I wonder how much of a factor that had to do with her recovery. And I know a lot of other people experienced that. So facilities being in existence and then being of use to you are two different things. When I, I have a high deductible plan, I believe in them, I think it's a good idea, but I'm a consumer, I'm a good shopper. And when I go to Carl and I ask a simple question like, how much will these immunizations cost? I don't get an answer. I get a runaround, I get a stonewall, I get four phone calls. I'm asking a simple question. I notice when I go to the Public Health District's website, there's a price list. Since when does government is more streamlined and efficient in answering a question than the market? That's odd. You know, so, you know, and also, I also worry too. There's this recent thing where Medicaid people have been capped. Am my next is a Blue Cross holder? You know, will my insurance not be good there? You know, if I don't have health alliance, will I just not be able to go anywhere in this town? And you can't answer that question and neither can they. So it's questionable how much value this is to me and maybe a lot of people who don't have university insurance. I think that's everything.
Okay, thank you. Do committee members have any questions? Oh, yeah, there is a question.
Andrea, a couple, a couple of things.
Go ahead, Charlie.
The city right-of-way, the median between, you know, the sidewalk out to the street, that's city property and so we're responsible for the trees and stuff. And usually we look for a cost share, half and half on the trees with the, with the landowners. Just that you should know that.
Are you getting a half and half?
A lot of times we do, yeah. I don't know, on this one, we're just beginning of the discussion. Also, another thing in there that you, about 300,000 of that is costs that will have to be done on that street anyway. Those are, it's just the timing of it, you know, and it's part of the capital improvement plan. So, yeah, I saw that price tag and said, oh, you know, that's a lot more than, than we were expecting, you know. We were looking at 200,000, it comes back 550,000, but that's because they roll in the capital improvement plan piece in advance. And we'll be talking about that tonight.
I mean, I'd like to see art here and landscaping, but I noticed that Lincoln Square Mall looks beautiful and then the business left.
Yeah, but, yeah, my only point is that it's not a Park District thing, it's, it's street and that's city and that's why the city takes it on. And we just got this tonight, so, but I think you're absolutely right, this stuff belongs on the web in this day and age and so I will ask that now that it's in our hands, I assume it's public property and belongs on, and can be put on the web, if not by them, then by us. So we'll see what we can get done there. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, our last speaker is Miki Menino, if you could come forward and state your name and address for the record. And I will mention that, yeah, that presentation that Charlie mentioned in response to Andrea's question will be something that we all step through next and that we just got a copy of it that I think Carl will be presenting and people will be able to see from here or from at home, right after this last speaker. Go ahead, Mrs. Menino.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Miki Menino, 807 North Orchard, Urbana. I've been a Carl neighbor for about 30 years. I'm in favor of the proposed street changes because of convenience and safety. The proposed changes give fast and easy access to University Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and Ray Street. All three streets will have traffic signals, giving drivers and pedestrians safe and easy access onto and across those streets. Residents living on the side streets in the Carl neighborhood will be able to leave their driveways more easily as the traffic patterns will move from both Kohler and Orchard onto Church and McCullough Streets. I'm particularly in favor of closing Kohler from University and Church, from University to Church. I thought that area should be closed for a long time for safety's sake, for the sake of pedestrians leaving the emergency room area and for ambulances entering the emergency room. Pedestrians leaving the emergency room don't always realize that they're walking straight onto a street and don't stop and look both ways before walking onto Kohler. These pedestrians don't realize that they should walk to the corner before crossing Kohler. Ambulances in particular have a difficult time entering the emergency room with traffic on Kohler between University and Park. Ambulances need to turn perpendicular to the entrance and then back into the entrance. That means that both lanes of traffic on Kohler need to stop in order for the ambulance to enter the emergency room. Drivers don't always know that they should give the right-of-way to the ambulance, even if the ambulance has its lights flashing. Ambulances frequently need to wait for drivers on Kohler to pass before they can either make their turn or back into the emergency room. Precious minutes are lost in the rescue of the person who is in pain or dying. It's for these reasons that I favor the proposed changes to the traffic patterns. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thanks. Okay, that is all of our public input tonight on this topic, so we will move to the Carl officials. Andrew Manzer has a number of his colleagues here with him. If you could come up and take a seat, they will step through this presentation. Make yourselves comfortable, I think we might dim the lights here and people at home will be able to see this on their TV screens as well. The way this will go is we'll have this presentation from Andrew Manzer and his colleagues at Carl and then time for committee members to ask questions of them.
Chair.
Yes.
I would like to accuse myself at this point in time due to the nature of the subject.
Okay, absolutely, thank you. Okay, Mr. Manzer, go ahead, if you could introduce your colleague and take it away.
My name's John Snyder.
Okay.
And I'll start this presentation. I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for Carl Foundation. Really appreciate the opportunity to present our plan tonight. I think we have a compelling story and we're anxious to share it with you, so we'll go ahead and get started. First of all, just to give you an overview of what we'll be talking about tonight, we want to talk about our current master planning approach, you know, why are we asking for a street closure? Why are we separating the potential expansion of the MIC from this issue? Want to talk a little bit about the 19, actually 96 is when it was signed, but it was really completed in 95, Carl Master Plan Agreement. A lot of work went into developing that MIC zone that we're talking about and I think it'd be good for all of you to hear the history with that. I want to talk a little bit about the Heart and Vascular Institute, really it's our future hospital, you know, why do we need that? Talk a little bit about site selection, why do we think this is the site that it should go? We know there's concern about the, if we do close the street, what's the impact on the street, what's the impact on the traffic? We want to go through that with you. We want to go through the parking needs that'll be driven from this. We appreciate that the council doesn't want to approve a street closure, thinking that we're going to come back the next month and say, oh, we need to expand the MIC to accommodate parking now. We want to be sure you feel comfortable, we can accommodate the parking within the MIC. Also want to talk a little bit about the neighborhood improvements we've done and then lastly, just some conclusions. So when we first started this, this summer, or actually earlier in the year, we did submit a revised zoning request to look at expanding the MIC. As I'll talk about in a few minutes, it was always anticipated that we would need to expand the MIC in the future. As we started through that process and having neighborhood meetings, actually doing a presentation here, we heard very loudly and clearly that, you know, a lot of the concerns that back in the 1990s were still here. One of the biggest ones is replacement housing being a major concern and, again, we tend to be part of the solution of that. We also felt like, as we, as we heard the input from the neighbors, that we're probably going to have to go through a similar process that we went through in the mid 90s. We're going to have to have a series of meetings, we're going to have to work with the neighbors, the park, the city, to come up with a plan that everyone, that everyone feels is feasible and works for everyone's best interest and that's going to take time. And we're faced with a project that we really need to move forward with now, then I'll talk about it, and that really led us to the decision, we really need to, to separate the decision as far as vacating the streets versus the, expanding the MIC. Our rationale for that, we feel like we need to be flexible, we need to, we need to meet our patient care needs today, but we also need to be flexible and be able to meet the neighbors' concern. We also recognize that it's going to take time. Quite frankly, the planning process last time took over two, almost two and a half years. I can speak to that because I was the one, I was the one who did that. And it was a good process, but it took a long time. And we really don't see any guarantees for faster process now and our, and our heart and vascular needs are immediate. We have a building plan that our board's already approved, we're ready to move forward today. And even if we move forward today, it's going to take time, that's why the time's of the essence. It'll take, it'll be 2011 before this building is actual a reality, assuming things move forward without any, any hitches. We have to get a state certificate of need. We can't even file for that certificate of need until we get the street vacation settled. Then obviously, we've got to prepare the land and build the building. So a little bit of history. This is the, an outline, I'm sorry, I hope you can't see that quite as well, that's, this is an outline of the Medical Institute campus that was formed in 1995 as part of the agreement. And the whole intent of that Medical Institute campus was, was to create a zone that we could use to expand the hospital as our needs rose, that wouldn't entail a big process, wouldn't entail having to come to the council and asking for zoning requests anytime we had that. It was a zone created so that we could, all the expansion could occur within that zone and that's what the neighbors wanted and that's what the city wanted. I throw this up just to show you, back in 95, 96, that short-term area is the MIC and back, even back then, we anticipated expanding within five to 15 years outside of that zone and obviously longer time reigns past that. So this is very consistent with what we talked about 12 years ago. So back in, actually started in 94, why did we go through the process to create a Medical Institute campus? We wanted a safer medical campus. Quite frankly, we were a community hospital at the time who was rapidly turning into a regional referral center, but we didn't really have a medical campus. We had a hospital and a traditional traffic grid of a city. We needed to improve the circulation around the campus and parking. We had a tremendous number of vehicular pedestrian conflicts and you heard about some of those that are still there, we had even more back then. We needed to address land usage. Neighbors were concerned, we're just buying houses all the time, what are we going to do with all the houses we're buying? We needed, we needed a better plan for building expansion, you know, as we grew, you know, where are those new buildings going to go? And so to, that was the purpose of the plan. Again, just to give you some history, a lot of this started in April of 93 when the council approved the Park Street closure, there was a lot of controversy around that and we agreed at that time to begin this master site planning process. Starting in August of 93, we had many, many, many meetings and sessions with lots of different constituents to try to determine the best, the best plan. Got lots of input. We engaged JJR, a site, master site planner, came up with a plan and initially presented that plan for public input in January 94. Over the next couple of years, we literally had over 40 meetings, different, some of the council meetings, some of the neighborhood meetings, to go through that plan, to present it, to hear all the concerns, come up with compromises and come up with something that everybody could support. That plan was approved late, by the city council late in 95 and was actually signed in early 96. So this is the, this is an outline of the campus back in 95 and the purple, the purple or the built, the actual buildings and the dotted line around there is the MIC. I think this is a dramatic visual, shows all the new buildings that we've built on the campus within the MIC since then. And as you can see, I think the, the plan has served us all really well. It's allowed Carl to expand with many significant buildings and it's allowed us to create a medical campus that's a lot safer and a much better environment for everybody. So some, some of the components of the plan, I've talked a little bit about these, but we've defined it kind of a development, we had a development agreement that really defined some responsibilities. We developed a loop road concept with, building a loop road with the land swap we had done with the park. We were able to close some streets and predict, create some pedestrian plazas that address some vehicular pedestrian conflicts that we had. We created some nicer drop-off areas, entryways. We established a long-term land acquisition boundaries. We really created some boundaries and said, okay, here's where we're going to expand, here's when we're going to expand. We actually sold back quite a few houses and we said, okay, we're not going to expand in this area and we sold back houses. We defined some long-term land usage, again, decided where future buildings would go and as you saw from the graphic, it's worked really well. Did a lot with the South Clinic, improving some access and circulation, some cosmetic stuff around the university, creating walks and landscaping, things like that. So I, what I would like to do is now kind of go through, and I think this is important, you know, I think we've kept our commitment to that plan. We've done a lot of stuff since then, I think we've been good, good neighbors and want to go through some of that stuff. We've built, again, we've built within the MIC as I show you, we've done about eight to 10 million dollars annually of renovations and investment in that camp. We've done about $8 to $10 million annually of renovations and investment in that campus and in Urbana. We've done significant new construction within that MIC, about $155 million of new buildings and construction since that agreement. Seven new buildings, four major expansions, and about half-- over half a million square foot have been added to the campus there. We funded some traffic lights at various places. Again, we did the land exchange with the park, built the loop road, did all the birmingham, the sidewalks, bike paths, loop road. We replaced some playground equipment, and we've covered all those costs. We created a park-like landscaping around the Forum, Crystal Lake Park. We've added a lot of trees, done things like that. We've significantly heightened security and safety in drop-offs. We've separated the pedestrian vehicular traffic whenever possible. We've created a mall-like atmosphere at Park Street. We've added over 800 parking spaces since '95, and we've honored the restricted neighborhood areas. In other words, we haven't acquired any property outside the area we talked about that we would not acquire property in, and in fact, did sell those houses back, as I mentioned. You heard earlier, I think we've been a very good residential property manager. I think we've maintained, quite frankly, higher code standards than many landlords, I think you'd see. We've done the systematic inspection of rental properties, and in fact, have only demolished five houses outside the MIC since the creation of the document. As far as contribution in taxes, we've contributed $50,000 to the Crystal Lake Neighborhood Development Fund. We did continue tax payments on the two houses that we did take down for the guest house. And I think we've done many things above and beyond the development agreement. Provided neighborhood security surveillance. Our security folks have a big presence in the neighborhood. As we talked about earlier, the lawn and landscaping, the bike paths, contributed to the labyrinth in the park, and have maintained the transitional houses. So, that's the history. It's what-- we went through a significant planning process, and I think we've done a very good job of doing what we said we were going to do. Now, I'd like to talk about the Heart and Vascular Center. Carl has been a regional leader over the last several years in heart and vascular services. In solution-- I'm sorry, in 2004 and 2006, we were actually named the top 100 cardiovascular hospital. Recently, we were health grades, top heart hospitals, so we've won multiple national recognition for our regional leadership and quality in heart and vascular services. You've heard people talk about, there's an increasing community need for this service. There's a lot of improved technology and equipment for us to continue to be contemporary that we need to do. We're getting much more involved in research, and as you all know, quality's becoming much more important to everybody. We threw this slide in there just to make a point that heart and vascular services, there's going to be just a tremendous increased demand for those services as we all get older. People over 45 are the ones who really use this, and as we all know, there's a lot more people going to be over 45 as we move forward. So, again, just to show you the tremendous need that we see going forward. So, this new building we're talking about, a Heart and Vascular Institute, and it's as much a future hospital as it is a Heart and Vascular Institute. It's going to be about 240,000 square feet. It's going to have 120 hospital beds in it, and it's going to be eight floors. The first floor of the building, which is about 50,000 square feet, is going to hold all of Carl Clinic's heart and vascular services. So, it'll be all the physician services and all the non-invasive vascular and cardiology testing procedures. So, significant Carl Clinic presence in that facility. That will be their heart center. The second floor will contain all our interventional cardiology labs, the cath labs, the interventional radiology labs, and the electrophysiology labs. Very intense procedure space, basically. It's very similar to ORs. The third and fourth floors will be mechanical space. The fifth and sixth floors will hold 30 beds each floor. Will have 60 heart and vascular patient-- private patient rooms. The seventh floor will have another 30 beds for non-cardiovascular bed needs. And as we've looked at our future demand and our bed needs going forward, we're going to need not only cardiovascular beds, but also non-cardiovascular beds. And then, the eighth floor is an additional 30 beds we want to add so that we can essentially go to all private rooms. Today, we still have a pretty good percentage of semi-private rooms, even with our latest addition we just opened up, and we want to add that additional bed so that people-- you know, it's just contemporary medicine to people have private rooms going forward. Now, a lot of this will be-- it's not necessarily new beds. We have-- we talked about the Rogers Building a few minutes ago. That's a very old building, 50s, 60s vintage. The rooms are real small. They don't have showers in them. They're just not contemporary. So, we'll be moving a lot of services out of some of those older buildings into this building, but it really gives us a chance to have contemporary space, not only for patient rooms, but also the interventional labs that we talked about, as well as the Carl Clinic's facility. Just economic impact, and I know we don't have a lot of detail here, and I'm sure this will be talked about in the future going forward, but obviously, there'll be a significant economic impact for Urbana. The construction project's about $144 million. 50,000 square feet of that will be taxable. It's Carl Clinic for profit will be taxable. Obviously, there'll be a lot of construction jobs and local capital expenditures. We very much anticipate that this is going to draw even more patients to Urbana from the region. We get a lot of our cardiovascular patients from the region. There'll obviously be some incremental increases in employees and physicians, and we'll have more physicians because this will be a big impact for our physician recruitment. Today, it's hard to find some of these subspecialty physicians like cardiologists, interventional cardiologists, and some of the other specialties, and a new facility is very important for our recruitment. This shows a rendering of what the building will look like. This is looking from the northeast, I believe, and northwest, yeah, northwest, and it's coming-- you can see in the background the existing North Tower building, and it's coming across Kohler, tearing down the manicure building that's there today. So, this building will be right next to-- adjacent to-- connected to the North Tower. So, this building and the North Tower, the existing North Tower building, and we just finished expanding, will truly be the hospital of the future. I mean, those two buildings will contain all the hospital beds at Carl in the future, eventually. Again, part of why we need to do this, some of the older buildings just aren't contemporary. We've talked about that. So, this shows on a map the building location we're talking about. It shows building-- tearing down the manicure building and building over Kohler Street and into that parking lot across the street. It is within the MIC zone. It's west and attached to the North Tower, as I mentioned. It's adjacent to the Rogers Building and the Emergency Department. That's important, being close to the Emergency Department. And again, the building would go over-- or be built on Kohler. This is what we would consider an optimum street vacation, being able to close Park Street all the way to Lincoln and closing parts of Bucy Street. That truly allows us to create a medical campus within the MIC, so there would not be any vehicular pedestrian conflicts. This is really the necessary street vacation, and it's that part of Park Street between Bucy and Kohler, and then the Kohler Street that we talked about. I want to talk a little bit about site selection. We looked a lot at alternative sites, you know, what made the most sense, what are the pros and cons of different sites, and quite frankly, this is really, at least on this campus, the only site that makes sense, and I want to go through that and explain that. First of all, there's critical adjacencies. It's real important for your heart center, ideally, to be very close to your Emergency Department. A lot of people coming through the Emergency Department have cardiovascular issues. It's real important for those catheterization labs, those interventional labs I talked about, to be very close to the ORs. Many times, those procedures turn into problems that need an OR, and you want to be real close to the OR so you can get those folks in the OR as quickly as possible. The connectivity to the existing hospital. Tunnels and utilities are important, but quite frankly, what's important is you don't want to separate your hospital. You don't want to take a big piece of your hospital and put it somewhere else, not adjacent to the rest of your hospital. So, clearly, it's got to be, you know, next to, attached to the existing North Tower. And then, the Emergency Department. We want to talk a little bit, and some of the folks who spoke earlier talked a little bit about this, and maybe we can answer some of the questions about some of the issues around the Emergency Department. So, this shows a graphic of some of the-- the first floor adjacencies that we're concerned about, and really, all this graphic's trying to show is that the Emergency Department's right there in the first floor. There are a lot of testing and things that-- you come in the Emergency Department, and you need testing in the heart center, and this just shows the heart center will be right there, and that's ideal. The second floor adjacencies are much more important. This is that whole issue of not wanting to separate those interventional labs from the OR, and as you can see from that graphic, the way we've designed it, those interventional labs would be right next door to the OR, which is ideal. Today, they're on the second floor in that Rogers Building. That space is just an older building and not contemporary. So, this keeps the critical adjacencies we have today, but puts them in contemporary space.
Which building of the map is the Rogers Building?
Let's see if I've got one. It is-- you see where it says Emergency Department? Yeah, it's the northern-- yeah, north half of that.
So, it's part of your emergency entrance area?
Yeah, mostly, the Emergency Department is in the center building, but it's-- yeah, it's right there. This just shows-- I think you've heard already a lot about the pedestrian vehicular conflicts and concerns we have around the Emergency Department. I guess the one thing I do want to point out, just how much busier our Emergency Department is compared to what it was, say, 10 years ago. The volume has increased just substantially from 33,000 visits in '95 to almost 52,000 visits in 2006. Much, much busier Emergency Department, and obviously, a lot more concerns with all the traffic and pedestrian traffic. This is a graphic just to talk about alternative locations and when we looked at this.
Excuse me, this way now.
Oh, okay, thank you. Again, critical premise for us is that this needed to be next to, adjacent, attached to the North Tower. So, as we look at the options, if we were to go north, that would be encroaching in the MIC, and that's not something that we want to do today. If we were to go east, we'd have to tear the Forum down. There's no other way to do that other than tear that building down. That's not something we want to do. Really can't go south because that gets into all those other buildings that I've got patients in today, and, you know, we can't do that. I can't-- until I get it built, I can't tear it down. So, really, the west is the only viable way to go on that campus. Yes, we could put it other spots. I think there's a spot there in University we looked at. I guess it could go there, but again, we lose so much, it just doesn't make any sense. We'd lose so much of-- splitting the hospitals up wouldn't make sense. We'd have to duplicate a lot of services, wouldn't make sense. The only other option would be to build off on another campus. Again, not something we want to do because you will have to replicate a bunch of different infrastructure, create a lot of other things. We don't want to do that, but that's really the only other option. Obviously, the other question would come up, "Well, why don't you just build over Kohler?" And we looked at that quite a bit. Andy's going to talk about that a little bit. The only thing I want to say is, we've looked at this. We can certainly talk about why we've come to this decision, but we've just come to say we won't build over Kohler. It's just there's too many issues, too many concerns, and Andy's going to talk about that.
Thank you. The largest issue that we face with actually building over Kohler and leaving vehicular traffic passing through a facility really has to do with the street-to-ceiling heights that we get into working with, and we work with a rule of 14-foot, nine inches in order to clear traffic through a facility. You'll see on University Avenue that we have a bridge across there, and that goes across to the third floor, which is a rule of thumb where we need to cross roadways in order to keep a safe distance to the floor of any structure. We talked about all the adjacencies involved in this project, and it's really that second floor that drives this adjacency issue and drives this structural challenge with building across Kohler. In order to reach that 14-foot, nine-inch requirement, we are in a situation of actually looking at having to lower Kohler Avenue and depressing the street. When we do that, we not only get into issues with Kohler, but also the intersections of Park Street and Church Street, and into some of those residential properties that we own to the north where we would actually be impacting driveways. Reason for that is it's not a simple issue of lowering the street directly under the building, but getting the grade requirements met so that you can still safely flow vehicles underneath of a facility. With depressing an area that large, certainly, a collection of stormwater becomes a major issue for us, trying to figure out how to do that in a reasonable way. We have a number of existing tunnels and utility infrastructure that runs across that street, which, again, when we get into the issue of depressing the street, we're into a situation of needing to relocate existing tunnel systems, which are used not only for all of our main utility runs from the power plant for steam, chilled water, electric, main water, all of those utilities that serve the campus, but that also serves all of the support service traffic that moves at the basement level of our facilities underneath those streets today that serve all of our supplies, linen, everything that comes in off of Bucy where our current loading docks are. One of the other challenges we face with trying to build over the street is creation of two separate basement systems. That can certainly be done, but it-- we lose a lot of the benefits of having a basement in a facility because we no longer have that linkage with both sides of that. And then, really, the final issue that Ms. Cox spoke to earlier tonight, the vehicular traffic impacts the facility itself in a number of ways, and if you can imagine a-- essentially, a tunnel being built through a building that's bridging over a street, we get into a lot of structural challenges with vibration, sound dampening. We certainly have a lot of risks that comes with accidents and fires that would need to be managed. Ventilation and fume control inside of an open airspace like that becomes a challenge, as does heating and cooling all that empty space under a building. Those issues are particularly a challenge because the floor that we would be looking at constructing directly above that, as you saw with the adjacency slide, is all that high-end procedural space where vibration dampening, sound dampening, all those things are an absolute requirement, so it does not impact the patient care environment. We're going to transition over here for a second to talk about the traffic impact of closing Kohler, and I'm going to ask Tom Jordan from the FOTH Companies to come up and to walk us through those slides, and then we will be rejoining.
Can I just take this pad and pass it? Just to prepare to pass it. The bottom to the left.
Good evening. My name is Tom Jordan. I'm with the FOTH Companies, and I'm here to summarize the traffic report that was prepared by the staff from our transportation program. This is the report, and if you give me the luxury of summarizing that, I'd be happy to do that for you.
Thank you.
We'd be here for a few days for me to read the detail of it. Very briefly, the key points of this report and the exercise that we followed was to gather data, interpret that data, and started with obtaining traffic counts from key intersections within the matrix of the Carl MIC. There were some intersections that we thought particularly more important, more sensitized to the closing of Kohler, but rather than limit traffic counts to those few intersections, we took traffic counts in both the morning and in the evening from some 18 intersections within that matrix. Took them on two days, two separate days, averaged-- Took them on two days, two separate days, averaged that data, took those counts when school was in session, to try to simulate as closely as we could what the impacts of closing Kohler would be on the neighborhood and on the general traffic flow within the street system around the MIC. And with that background data, then, we truncated the existing traffic counts 20 years into the future, so that if no changes were made, what would the functionality of the street system be with no changes from today, 20 years out? And then, in addition to that, imposed, injected, if you will, a changed land use within that matrix, that being the heart and vascular center and another, and other improvements, and then in total, tried to determine what the impacts of that traffic would be 20 years from 2007. Part of that exercise included trying to determine where traffic comes from. One would guess maybe most from the north, most from the south, most from the east, most from the west. But using zip code data provided by Carl, we ascertained that mostly the traffic's pretty much balanced, coming from all four directions. And then, after that was applied to 20-year traffic with the improvements done, we, we studied what would happen if we closed Kohler Street and distributed that traffic using the intersection counts that we had taken along key points. We suspected at the time that closing Kohler would have the greatest impact on Church and Lincoln, and we suspected that it would have an impact on the intersection of McCullough and University, as those trips that come up and down Kohler Street today were distributed to the east or to the west. And in fact, we did recommend, and there is a design underway, to make improvements to the intersection of Church Street and Lincoln, including a five-lane section on both the north and south legs on Lincoln Avenue, and improving the eastern leg on Church Street to a three-lane section and adding traffic signals. These are the actual results of the, we call an O&amp;D study. Using the zip code data, we see that 35% comes from the east, 19% from the west, et cetera. Nearly quartered, nearly 25% from each direction. And these are the listing of the street intersections that were counted in order to see what would happen if we closed Kohler Street. And then, if, we've included in this packet for your, for review, some of the factual counts from University and Kohler and from Church Street and Kohler Avenue. Just a graphic of the, of the various intersections where actual traffic data was taken. In the traffic world, there's not a lot of traffic uses the intersection today of, of Church and Kohler. Stop control, there is, it would not meet signal warrants. It functions very nicely today, under stops, under stop conditions. And when we took the counts, the eastern leg of Church Street was closed, and so, if we took new counts today, the trip assignment that we have on Kohler Street would be conservative. In fact, we believe less than it would be if we recast that data with new counts today. It's interesting to notice where traffic goes and where it comes from when it hits University Avenue. About 75% of the traffic goes east or west, so one would surmise that that traffic can be rerouted over to McCullough or via Church Street over to Lincoln Avenue. It's hard to say what happens when that, the north-south traffic that continues on past University Avenue, whether it turns, goes east and west, or whether it's just a driver convenience for the locale. But we reassigned the traffic that was projected on Kohler Avenue to the adjacent street systems to see whether they would operate and function at a level, at an acceptable level of service, and the answer, and the answer was yes. And if you study the, the traffic counts on this intersection, you see that the predominant, as we all know, predominant traffic flows on University Avenue. University Avenue is operating nearly at capacity today. In fact, some of the projections for increasing traffic on University Avenue for 20 years out will most likely go the other direction, because driver convenience and driver familiarity, drivers tend to avoid busy arterials. So we might well find traffic dropping in the next 20 years on University Avenue, as alternate routes are sought by those drivers. But to be conservative, we kept the higher counts and projected them forward, increased them over that 20-year period. Taking the actual data, we simulated traffic on the various intersections, and we have enough information to show you any one of the 18 intersections that you'd like to see. But we have a traffic simulation model that shows what happens at various intersections. And so we can show you what happens to, what the traffic flow is like today, and what the traffic flow will be like 20 years out with Kohler Street blocked and the additional traffic within the MIC campus added on to that traffic flow. Now, I want to, I want to just state, before this starts, this isn't a cartoon. This is actual traffic counts from 2007 and actual projected traffic counts into 2027 with Kohler Street closed. So Jason, if you'd start with Kohler and Church. And show the traffic in real time at that intersection today. I'll show it 20, now show it 20 years from today with Kohler Street closed. Again, this is real time. This is the way the intersection would function, will function with Kohler Street closed to the south. And I said before that there isn't a lot of traffic that uses Kohler Street during the peak hours. We found that, that the actual count, that the national lane usage, single lane usage in the highest peak at the intersection of Kohler and University was about five vehicles per cycle. And you stop and think about it, that's one vehicle about every 12 seconds. So it's not heavily used now. And as you're all aware, some of you may or may not be aware, the intersection that, of University and Kohler today is signalized, and it also has countdown signals, signals for safety purposes. So if you'd show, Jason, show Church or Kohler and University. Kohler and University. And we made allowance for north-south pedestrian traffic and included an allowance for north-south bike traffic that would come through that signalized intersection. Carl's made a commitment to providing a pedestrian, bikeway trail in north-south direction along, very near the current Kohler corridor. And then, if we could look at the intersection of Church and Lincoln.
Is this it?
In 2007, sure. Believe me, this is a lot more informative than reading this report. We would be incre, we would be improving that intersection, the intent is to improve that intersection in, in conjunction and cooperation with the City of Urbana, to a five-lane section north-south with left-turn lanes, and then a three-lane section on the east leg for Church Street. And then finally, if you would look at University and McCullough, which was another intersection of concern with the rerouted traffic under current conditions. I should mention that this traffic impact analysis has been approved by City of Urbana engineering staff. It's been approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation. It's been approved, approved by COATS and, and the MTD.
Is that 2007 or 20 years out?
20 years out.
Is it announced with no street closure or with?
That's with closure. Everything that's shown 20 years out. Excuse me?
Who's being allowed to go in and out of Kohler?
This is McCullough.
This is McCullough and University. And the current plan is, the, the surface lot that's at the northwest quadrant of that intersection is being redesigned and reconstructed, and it will have no ingress, egress on to University, it will have egress at the southwest of, of part of the parking lot where it goes today, but the main entrance to the university, the new lot at the northwest quadrant there at McCullough will be on to McCullough Street. These plans are, have been submitted to the City of Urbana.
Are you referring to the part adjacent to?
Correct.
That, the gray space?
The gray space, yes. Actually, the specifics of the design are not gray, because it has a rain garden and some landscaping, and looks, it actually looks pretty nice. So with that, do you have any questions about, that we might be able to ask, answer for you?
And is there more of your presentation? Do we just want to ask questions now about the particular traffic counts, or are you ready to take questions about the, the entire presentation this evening?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's what I thought. So let's just take questions now about the traffic. Go ahead, Mayor.
I, I like that technology that was used on Lincoln Avenue, and I know there were a lot of people that thought that the traffic would not be improved if it was cut to three lanes, but instead, everything goes much more smoothly. I do have a question, and that's on page 31. You, you talk about the origin and destination of all the traffic, but you only did Carl employees by zip code. Is there a reason that you didn't include the patients, because you would have their zip codes?
It was, it was the best available, available data, and we just made the assumption that the patients would be, would come from the same direction that the employees do. That's a great question. But in fact, if, if it changes, if any of those directions change by, by 10 or 15%, it really doesn't matter, as the trips are reassigned, because the level of service for the impacted intersections was all acceptable. So you could weight it in any direction, and the intersections would still function at an acceptable level of service. That's a great question, very observant.
I see Charlie, and then Danielle. Charlie, go ahead.
Yes. Can you show traffic flowing all the way around? Bring the scale down a little bit, so we can see what's going on on McCullough on the south part here? Or, okay, I guess I'm, I'm curious about what happens on McCullough south of University, and how it comes down and around and over back to Kohler.
Okay. We didn't go down that far.
The connection, the connection that comes around the, the parking lot.
Yeah. We did not, we did not take any counts down in that area. We stopped at University.
Okay. Well, one of, one of the issues that, that, you know, I wonder about is, is, and we've talked about how much of this is, is designed as complete street, so that there's, there's room on the street itself for bicycles, because that answers part of the issue of, of getting around. If you're a, if you're a bicycle commuter going north-south on Kohler, you may not want to get off on a, a bike path, and you have to deal with pedestrians, and instead, you might want to come around in, in a more efficient way. You know, commuter, bicycle commuters behave differently than, than, say, a more casual bicyclist that, that is comfortable on a sidewalk. Somebody who is commuting is typically going considerably faster than, than a bicyclist on a sidewalk. And so, complete streets are really welcome to them. So I, I don't know how you've designed McCullough here and what changes might come. I see Andy nodding his head back there.
In all honesty, I mean, it's very, it's a, it's a great point, but in all honesty, we didn't carry the, the study to that level at this time. I mean, it can be done, if it's important to the, to the city.
Thanks.
Okay. Danielle, and then Dennis will be next. Danielle?
You had mentioned that there'd be a bike and pedestrian trail, excuse me, roughly where Kohler Avenue is currently. Is, is there a map that shows what that location would be?
It's actually, this is why I'm going to show you this.
Okay, so we're getting to that part. And let me ask another question. This, the intersection at Church and Lincoln Avenue that you mentioned would have upgrades. Who's going to pay for the upgrades to that intersection, and has that been discussed?
That's a shared cost between Carl and the City of Urbana.
Okay. Do you know roughly what, what the share is? Or is that in negotiation at this point? Maybe that's?
Carl's share, that is approximately $150,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I was going to ask about the proposed bike trail, because it wasn't clear where on this, this map that would be located. And I do see that this proposal realigns Kohler at the base where it joins Church. It becomes a, basically, a three-way intersection, but there is what you call a drop-off road. And is that to service patient drop-off at the hospital? Is that emergency drop-off?
You know, that, that question would best be answered by John or Andy later.
All right. So there's going to be more, and I can discuss that with you later. Okay.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, just to follow up on the, on the Church and Lincoln intersection, and Bill Graham may be able to answer this better than anybody, which is acquisition of property. You know, do we have the, the ability to get the space to expand to and include the right turning radiuses and all that for a five-lane intersection?
The, the additional right-of-way acquisition is underway as we speak. The eastern leg was centered, was it not, on the, within the existing right-of-way?
That's correct.
And then, the discussions are underway with the properties to the west side for that, the necessary right-of-way to make those improvements.
Okay, so that would be part of, would that be part of the certificate of need planning? All that would already be in place as part of that, or? Andy, I don't know.
I don't know.
Does the five, do you have to have the, the five-lane intersection as part of your certificate of need planning?
No.
Okay.
Any other traffic-related questions for FOTH? Okay, thank you very much. We'll have Mr. Snyder and Mr. Manzer here again to continue with the presentation.
I'm going to start with fielding any of the questions.
You want to just go ahead and finish the presentation, or?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and finish, and then we'll have some comprehensive time for questions about any of these topics.
One of the, the questions that we need to answer is, what is the, the parking impact, not only today, but at the conclusion of this project? And how do we meet our needs within this existing MIC zone? And there's certainly been a lot of discussion about that over... And there's certainly been a lot of discussion about that over the last several months. To begin with, we've gone back to what are the code requirements that we're trying to meet today and going forward in the future. So we start with breaking out, what are the various types of uses of the facilities that we have on our campus? And you could see that they are various. We have some lesser intensity uses with the auditorium and the daycare facility, and then we get into our hospital, and then our medical office space that we have on the campus. What that means, and I'm sorry, this is, it's in your packet, but not terribly visible up here, what it means is that today, as we look at our parking needs on the campus, we have a total of 2,829 spaces available within our campus. And this document simply is, how do we break that down? Where does the demand come from, from a code standpoint that we're trying to meet? And then where our spaces are? We have a required number of spaces of 2,555. So today, we have an excess of 274 spaces on the campus. As you look at our campus today and how we're structured, here you see the red signifying the existing facilities on the campus, and then those tan boxes or gold boxes on the projector are where all the existing parking lots are today. And those exist not only within that existing MIC zone, but as you all know, we rely heavily on the Champaign County Fairgrounds to support the majority of our staff parking and some of our guest parking. As we go forward and forecast what happens at the conclusion of the Heart Center and future hospital expansion project, we see some interesting things happen. Using the current totals that we have today and some changed uses of parking that I'll show you in just a second, because there's a deletion and then an addition back of parking, the other thing that's happening on the campus is there's a number of changes in use. The primary one is the move off-site by the Carl Clinic of its primary care business. With the construction of the clinic in Urbana and of the clinic in Champaign, that drives a tremendous amount of volume off of the campus that today is a very, very heavy use, so probably our heaviest use of parking. At the end of our project, we actually are forecasting that we will have a change and actually an increase in our surplus of parking that will grow to 540 spaces, which is very good news, because as you know, that while we have a surplus of parking for certain uses, we still have challenges primarily with the north parking deck, and this helps us to alleviate that. Where does that come from? This graphic shows you in green the changes that are coming as part of this project. Those changes being that everything in green is being removed. So on McCullough Street, where we have several support buildings, where we have a lot of staff support space uses, all of those facilities are in the process of being demolished and then redeveloped for parking. Those are, that's a planned demolition, and we're starting to submit those requests to the city and are working with the staff on that process. The Manor Care Building's been talked about a little bit tonight, as it's right next to that North Tower building, where we need to adjoin this new facility. So that facility comes down. You'll see there's a lot of green parking there. That's our existing emergency department parking, and also our physician, medical staff parking. And then down on University Avenue, there is a facility down there that we have recently acquired and will plan for demo towards the end of this project. And also lifting here, right on Kohler Avenue, those existing temporary buildings where our occupational medicine departments exist today, we are in the process of relocating that operation and removing those. At the end of the project in 2011, this is what the planned redevelopment of all of that space looks like. So the large blue L-shaped building is the new heart and vascular center. You see that the blue box just to the right of that and attached to our buildings is part of that project attaching back over to the existing emergency departments. And then you also see with the closure of Kohler and Park and the removal of those OCH Med trailers, that L-shaped lot up against our lab services building is the space that we are planning to redevelop and reuse for our emergency department parking. So that is, to answer an earlier question, that is the location where the emergency department parking will be in the future. To the east and at the top of this diagram, wrapped around the north parking deck is a large, flat surface lot. As we take down those other buildings, that is a major lot that we will redevelop for use there. And then on University, we have another staff support lot that will be created down there on University Avenue. So there's a lot of changes that will happen as part of the project, and we felt it important to walk through the steps that we go through as we look at what's our parking need today and what does that look like in the future. What you can expect as we continue to redevelop space and we continue to make improvements is that we'll continue to apply the same standards that you've become accustomed to with the Forum project, with the redeveloped space between the Forum building and the North Tower, now that that building is complete, the same standards that we'll be applying to the south campus with the completion of the Mills Breast Cancer Institute and Carl Cancer Center, and completion of that loop road. In practice, what all those, what the artistic rendering looks like, these are just some of the snapshots, particularly on the top and the bottom of the diagram, as we apply that green buffering, the trees, landscaping, and iron fencing around our campus. The bicycle path piece that was talked to earlier, we try to get into a little more detail here, and as we continue to develop our site plans and as the L-shaped building footprint begins to really take on shape and life as we go through the design process, as this is right now based off of our program and initial designs, as we continue to develop that and get the, those most accurate dimensions down to the foot, we'll be able to begin the site planning process. And as we get into the site planning process to go back and put in the parking, put in the green space, put in walk paths, bike paths, and driveways, it's anticipated that that red line that is going, what's today up Kohler, which would be redeveloped as our emergency department drive, that there would be a bike path component that would be to the left side of that roadway with a bike path on the left side of the roadway, turning down what is today Park and then back through the campus through a dedicated route, and then back up to the existing Kohler space. On here, you see that red line extending down University Avenue, making use of existing sidewalks in that location. Like Charlie, to one of your comments earlier, to that south side, as we redevelop that space, there is also a wide path that goes down the south side of that green space that will be on, just on the south side of that roadway as it's put back in. One of the things we've been talking about also is bicycle parking on the main campus. There are eight locations that will be complete within the next couple of weeks that are additions to that existing bicycle parking. So there'd be a total of eight locations and 105 bicycle parking locations. Majority of those will be covered bicycle parking spaces, and they will be located near the main entrances of the main hospital, the South Clinic Building, both of our parking structures. There's one between the Forum Building and our North Tower, and then also another to the west next to the Spine Institute. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John to.
Just to summarize, you know, the original development agreement was really designed to streamline some of the existing, some of our expansion process, and we feel this is similar to what that's been. We feel like we've fulfilled the commitment we've made. The Heart and Vascular Institute, really our future hospital, will benefit the region, the patients in the region as well as Urbana and Champaign. The need for our growth is immediate. We really need to move forward now. Hopefully, we've convinced you that the proposed location's the best for patient care and for hospital efficiencies. Hopefully, we've convinced you the impact of the vacation of the street will have minimal impact on the traffic flow. Urbana is our preferred location for the growth of specialty services. As the clinic is branched out and moved some of their primary care, we really feel that Urbana campus is where we want to continue to have all our specialty services located. So you have our commitment to continue to work with the neighbors to address concerns, to continue to make sure our campus meets the standards that we all want, to provide the bike paths, pedestrian walkways, and everything else that we've talked about, and also to work with the city to address the needs for affordable housing in Urbana if and when Carl gains approval to expand the MIC. So we respectfully ask for your support and look forward to your questions.
Okay, thanks very much. Before I open the floor for questions, I just wanted to remind people, this is just a presentation tonight, there's no action asked of the committee members at this time. It's 8:45, so I want to do a kind of time check. And we have another issue that many members of the public will come out for as well tonight. So what I'd like to do is focus on really those questions that committee members have for the Carl representatives that either could be answered tonight, or that we could ask them to go bring us more information about when they come back again and when there is actually some action on the floor. Answers you all need to be able to know whether to support or oppose, or how to vote on the Carl issue when it would come forward. So with that, I think we can ask questions about any of the presentation of the Carl representatives and some of our own staff if we need help. Heather's the first hand I see. Go ahead, Heather.
Well, first of all, I really appreciate the great presentation that the four of you gave tonight, and I fully support the closure of Kohler and all the hard work that you've put into this. My question is, how soon do you need an ordinance to go forward on this plan if approved by the rest of the council?
We're hoping that we can get that in September. I think that's, as I understand the process, it needs to be a public hearing, which we hope to be in August, and maybe we could vote on it in September. Again, we can't even really start our planning process with the state until we have control of the property we're going to build it on. That's just a state requirement. You have to show the site you're going to build a building, and you have to show that you have control of that site. The state COIN process, it takes a minimum of six months to go through. So we can't even start that clock until we get this done, so we're hoping September.
And Bill, this question is for you. Is staff prepared to, come September, have something for the council to be able to vote on?
Yes. Our tentative plans are to advertise for the public hearing, which would be at our August 13 meeting, and probably the second Monday in September, we would be looking for council consideration for the vacation itself. So tonight is kind of a kickoff, if you will, of the request for the street vacation process. It's a pretty structured methodology that we've used in the past. The appraisals have already been done, we know what the values of the vacations are. We've heard from all the departments, all the utility companies, MTD, et cetera, on what their comments are for the vacations. So we can put that together and after the public hearing, discuss what those, you know, issues are. And I think, you know, Carl and the traffic impacts of those closures were pretty, made very clear tonight as to what those impacts are, so I think we're ready to move forward with those recommendations.
Well, if there were an ordinance here for us to vote on tonight, to send to council with a recommendation, I would be the first to make a motion to approve it, so let's see something sooner rather than later.
Just to clarify something, I don't think it was specifically, well, I think we mentioned it, but we're looking at some alley vacations also. And alley vacations isn't quite a formal process as a street vacation. It doesn't require a public hearing. It does require 100% of the adjacent property owners to be in favor of that vacation, which is Carl. But anyway, slight detail, but important detail. So I just want you to realize that it's street and alley vacations at seven distinct locations.
Okay, let's see. I saw the mayor, and then Robert, and then Dennis, we're going in that order.
I just have a couple of questions. On page 36, on the parking requirements, I was a little surprised to see that for the hospital, there's one for each bed based on permitted occupancy, but for the clinic, there's one for every 250 square feet. I would think that, you know, a lot of patients get delivered by their family members, so they wouldn't need a parking all day, so that was a question.
Yeah, these are just the code requirements. We just.
Is that reasonable or unreasonable?
I think it's reasonable.
Okay. And then my other question was on page 27, where I noticed that your emergency room numbers went down from the 1980s. Was that related to Medicaid or?
No, what happened is we used to have convenient care with the emergency department, and we made a decision to quit doing the convenient care in the emergency department. It was done in the clinic locations, so we also saw the decrease. Those are the low acuity visits, so that's why it went down there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Robert Lewis?
As I heard tonight, I didn't hear a whole lot of conversation about infrastructure under Kohler or under Park Street. And Bill just mentioned that the utilities have been addressed. We need to hear a little bit about that. I mean, is there anything in terms of infrastructure that would impact the residents north or south of Kohler?
I think basically the answer is no. And they would be looked at in more detail when we get to the engineering design, but I can tell you from the sanitary storm sewer, there are logical solutions to reroute storm and sanitary sewer pipes. Fawcett and city staff have even begun a little discussion on that, you know, if and when we get to that point in time. As far as the other utilities, again, it would have to be through a logical process. Overhead utilities would probably be rerouted in underground, which all the other overhead utilities are underground on campus, so that sort of thing. So the gas, electric, cable, phone, you know, those would all be logically addressed as far as the construction detail plans, the construction management firm that they would employ to do would be, you know, similar to any other project, it would be like this. So it's kind of early to know the specifics, but I don't see any fatal flaws in what they're trying to do here.
So in terms of sanitary sewer, those kinds of issues?
They can be accommodated, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Dennis?
I guess I had a couple of questions. I guess, you know, I guess generally it does make sense to me to construct a hospital rather like an airport, have all your central services in a main terminal area, have adequate parking on the periphery, and have a ring road to address flow and inflow and outflow into the area. And so it's encouraging, well, I mean, I guess it has made sense to me that McCullough has become basically a ring road for the east and the north half of your campus area, and that you would be infilling the center to make it more useful. The first thing that occurred to me was, could Kohler Avenue actually be depressed, you know, like, say, as a underpass kind of road? But because it's situated, because the new hospital site is situated to the north part of that street, you were telling me that access, once you get up to Park, would be a problem because you'd be coming in from a lower angle, and there would not be any way to do that. I was going to ask, how many levels of basement are in the current North Tower?
Just one.
One, so it's only, underground, there's one level?
Yes.
And are the tunnels, are the service tunnels, are they lower than the basement, or are they on a par level with the basement?
Yeah, they grade into it, but they come in at that main level, yes. So they're.
So the service tunnels are basically one floor below a basement level?
Yes.
So that would be a problem if you were going to try to find a way of allowing Kohler to remain as an underpass kind of a?
Yes, yes.
Because it would certainly solve the ground-level traffic problem completely.
There are actually two tunnels that cross Kohler Avenue. One main utility tunnel over from the power plant across to where the emergency department is, from the power plant, and then another essentially just to that edge of Park Street, northern edge of Park Street.
I was looking at page 18, which indicates the floors of the new building that you're going to be building, the Heart and Vascular Institute. going to be building, the Heart and Vascular Institute, the future hospital. You said that the first floor was going to be basically non-invasive cardiology, i.e. testing services.
And all the physician offices.
And physician offices. So there's no emergency activity on that floor?
No, other than, there's a lot of times where the non-invasive testing, a lot of times when patients come to the emergency room, they'll need that non-invasive testing. It's convenient to be right next to that.
It's convenient, but not mandatory?
No.
All right. The second floor is your interventional cardiology. That's where the serious activity takes place. You said the third and fourth floors are going to be mechanical, and you kind of breezed past that floor. So what does that mean? Is that where a lot of heating and cooling items and circulatory air conditioning kind of units are going to be?
As well as the power distribution within that building. So the main power feeds coming into the building will have distribution centers there also to the floors above.
Why wouldn't that be in the basement? It seems really an odd thing to put those kinds of non-patient services on the third and fourth floor of a hospital.
There absolutely will be some infrastructure in the basement of the building. That is part of what is in all of our facilities. But as you build these multi-storied buildings with the capacity to go up, it's actually a rather conventional way of building the infrastructure to get it routed to the correct floors. So it's the way not only our hospital buildings are built, but the majority of hospital buildings that I've had the opportunity to tour, walk through, and be part of typically have upper infrastructure floors, interstitial floors for those distributions.
Why wouldn't you put that in an auxiliary, like an annex next to the hospital, completely devoted to your mechanical operations, rather than? It sounds like you're actually wasting two floors of potential hospital beds.
Maybe it would be good if we could, next time, bring some information.
That'd be great, because that's a question I have. Then the fifth and sixth floors have to do with private patient rooms, and then the seventh floor, non-cardiovascular beds. It could be like maternity beds or any kinds of other beds for patients.
It'd be medical surgical. It wouldn't be restricted.
Okay, I guess I was just wondering about the need to have the cardiology labs and emergency services on the second floor when there was a discussion about, could these things be higher up so that Kohler Avenue could stay open and there could be, you know, that the labs and other kinds of services could be a floor higher to allow for bypass?
You really want the, as they are today, you really want them on the same floor and loaded, located as close as possible to the operating rooms. Unfortunately, sometimes these cases, complications happen. Sometimes, quite frankly, these patients need open-heart surgery, and they have to be taken to the operating room immediately if the case goes, if they have issues in the case. So you really want that on the same floor and as close as possible.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next, I'll take Danielle, then Charlie.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. The first is, if you were required to build less parking per hospital bed, would you, or would you build one parking space per bed? Excuse me, I'm losing my voice.
So, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, right now, the city code requires you to build one parking space per bed. If you could build less than that, if the code were to change, would you build fewer parking spaces?
No.
Okay. My second question is, is the bike pedestrian, I appreciate that, well, first thing I'll say is, as an avid pedestrian bicyclist who visits Crystal Lake Park frequently and does use Kohler Avenue, I can definitely attest to the conflicts between ambulances and cars and pedestrian and bikes, and I have seen some close calls. So I've witnessed that firsthand, and I do have concerns about the safety at that location. The bike pedestrian trail, which I'm happy to see that you included in your master plan, it looks like it goes through a parking lot. Is that correct? And how will you ensure, I haven't seen something like that before, how will you ensure safety and not kind of repeating the same problems of the conflict?
We obviously need to address that in the design, and as we get into how we design that entrance and drop off for the heart center, as we design the drop off and the drives around there, we will work to minimize all those conflicts as much as possible. And I would say what's represented there today as a design is not yet a design, it's a rendering.
Okay, I see. Let's see. My last question, which kind of has to do with the larger picture, is what's the future of the, what's called the North Tower? It's actually south of your new hospital building.
Our new hospital building?
And it's, no, it's south of that, and it's north of the university. So essentially, I think, when I have visited people there, I think there's intensive care in that tower, things like that.
And Parkview.
Oh, the Parkview building? We'll continue to use that for, right now, it's mostly, as you say, intensive care units. Clearly, over time, I would see that there'll be some additional floors to this new building, and some of that will move over. Because again, I see this new building and the one we just expanded truly being the hospital of the future, those two buildings. And all those other buildings would phase out over time.
So does that mean that you're looking at some kind of future demolition of that building, or it would just be a reuse as something other than?
We haven't really, probably eventually a demolition, I would guess, a reuse for a while. I mean, we have a tremendous amount of office space needs and things like that that we could probably use some of for.
Okay. And you had mentioned the future of street vacations, not the Kohler Avenue is being proposed in the short term, but some of the longer term. I think it's Park Avenue to Lincoln and Bucy Avenue. What's the timeframe that you're looking at? I know that you're still in the process of planning, so just kind of a rough timeframe of when you might be requesting that.
The request that we plan to bring forward is actually for all of those streets. So it is for Kohler, for Park, from Kohler to Lincoln, and for Bucy from church down to university. So our plan is to actually bring forward the formal request for that entire piece.
Okay, so in August?
With this initial request, yes.
And just so I understand, if those streets were vacated, you would keep them as streets, but they'd be private drives to your parking lots essentially? So they wouldn't be, they'd be closed to through traffic, is what you are proposing?
Correct.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, Charlie.
I have 10 questions here.
Can you make them as compact as possible, given the power?
Well, they're complicated. I'm sorry. I can save them for later.
Well, I guess one, as you go through them, I think one thing to think about is whether they could be questions that you ask of the Carl representatives, that they could bring back a slide or a description of next time, but that we might not cover.
That's fine, and I can give them to you in writing. Okay, let's, if we could turn to the slide, slide 45, which, we'll start with the pedestrian and bicycle access type stuff. I have a couple of questions in there.
Okay, you have a dedicated bike route here, but where does this go from here? Turn on here, but it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't connect to anywhere.
Right. From there, it will continue down and around that loop road. As we complete that with the Mills Breast Cancer Institute and Carl Cancer Center project, we will be going back in and reconstructing that roadway and reopening it.
Right now, it's built extremely narrow, but it has the sidewalk, it's not wide enough for the street.
Correct, correct.
So you're saying this would become a complete street coming around here?
Correct. Also, I'm not sure, Bill, maybe you can speak to this, but there is a connection point there planned for the future, I think, back to the city's bike trails.
That's correct. We don't have a timeframe, not any, you know, specific plans, but from that point, from McCullough going east to downtown, that is a desire of the cities.
Yeah, I mean, anything you can do to help with the railroad and getting that access in there and widening that, that would make a nice route. I'm afraid I have to go up there a second time here.
In terms of this, I don't, you have this as a proposed bike usage, but it's not real clear whether this is bike lane, people on the sidewalk, or whether it's just you can allow bikes to be on the road along with ambulances and other vehicles that are allowed to be here.
Right. The intention is to separate that, but we need to bring back a design for you that I think speaks to that, because this obviously does not.
Okay. Yeah, I guess what I'd like to see is how all of the emergency vehicle access will work in there. And so turning to slide, if you could turn to slide 26.
Okay, in one of the other slides, you show this is constructed and filled in. We talked earlier about being a second-story, you know, pathway across there, but you talked about adjacencies and stuff, and it seems that if you're going to be efficient, you'd actually fill in all of this space with both expanded ER and better access into this with a two-story building.
And we just haven't gotten that far in the planning. We've looked at the Heart and Vascular Institute. We know we need to have some access there. Is that access a walkway? Is that access actually a physically attached building? Not sure yet.
Yeah, because actually, one of the criticisms on today is that you've got all this space in here that's open. Why not put some of this two-story building, turn it in over this instead of taking this space out here? And that's a question I'd like to see answered long-term, because if you turned and brought the building around, you'd get your adjacencies with a lot more efficiency and without having to go so far out over Kohler.
Sure.
I don't think you can get away without going over Kohler, but you could be a lot more compact.
So I guess that leads me to my follow-up questions then, is, you know, you're basically saying that your building design itself isn't all that fixed at this point? There's still a lot of?
Well, we have, we've done a lot of planning as far as how much space we need. We've looked at what we think the footprint makes sense, you know, would make sense. But obviously, there's just a lot of detailed planning needs to go into that as far as exactly what fits where and how.
What happens if you don't get your certificate of need?
If we don't get our certificate of need, we can't build it. I really don't anticipate an issue getting a certificate of need, because quite frankly, this is, will be presented as always replacement space. Again, the Rogers Building, a lot of these patients are in the Rogers Building today. It's not contemporary. The space that our labs are in today is part of, it's the Rogers Building. We have no more space to expand. The equipment is contemporary, the space is not. So I really don't anticipate us having a problem with that. We're not asking for new beds or anything. That's usually where there's an issue.
I know the current building you have is, that you just finished building, can go up higher, right? So 12 stories next?
No, it can't go up any higher.
It can't go up higher. You're proposing?
It's currently 11 stories.
It is 11 already? Oh, okay.
The, I'm sorry, the current North Tower that we just finished expanding is 11 stories.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
How tall will, this building's going to go to eight, but it could go to 11?
Yes, we've constructed the ability to match it.
Will there be any primary care left at Kohler and University?
Very little, if any.
Okay.
All the primary, specialty care.
Okay, then, so you're going to put all of your primary care over in?
Urbana and Champaign.
Urbana, two locations in Champaign, one location in southeast Urbana. Nothing for this part of the community, then?
Again, that's Carl Clinic.
Okay.
My understanding is that they're going to move the majority of those, of the primary care to those two new big clinics. I would guess there'll be some presence here, but I think it'll be minimal.
Okay, so that's an issue to take up with Carl Clinic, then. I would hate to see them vacate this entire section of town.
And they'll have all their specialty care here. It's not like they're moving, they're just moving the primary care. All their specialty care will still be on this Urbana campus.
Yeah, but it's nice to have primary care, you know, where you can get to it easily for the north side of the, you know, the north and northeast parts of the community, rather than having to go and commute far away to get your primary care. I guess my last question is sort of one, it's all tied together. I wasn't here when Park Street was vacated. Now, is my understanding that you presented a building plan then that was on Park Street, using Park Street, and that what we have today is just basically a two-story and some cul-de-sacs, and you didn't really build on Park Street?
Right.
What guarantees do we have that this time, that, you know, if we do vacate streets, we will actually see the buildings as they are presented? And what kind of agreements are you willing to make in return for, you know, can we get tit for tat? You know, if we say, you get this street, but if you don't do it, if you don't build, we get the street back?
Sure. I think we're willing to entertain any of those discussions. You know, clearly, the Park Street closure, at the time, we had planned on putting an ambulatory surgery center there. Things changed, and we didn't. That was, quite frankly, impetus of the '95 plan. It was one of those, you know, hey, we really need to plan better, we need to understand what Carl's going to do, we need the neighbors' input, we need the city's involvement with the park. And quite frankly, that's why I went through a lot of, you know, we kept our commitments. I think since we've done that plan, we've been very good at keeping our commitments and honoring what we talked about. I think we're willing to put, you know, whatever agreement or whatever we need to do, you know, our board has approved this project. It's approved, we're ready to go forward. So I think the commitment's there, and we're willing to do whatever would make you feel comfortable, keep that commitment.
Yeah, I guess in closing, and I'll shut up here, I guess I'm pretty supportive of the project. I know a lot of people have spoken to me in support of this. My three conditions have been, you know, a guarantee that what we get told you're going to do actually happens, the good bicycle and pedestrian access around and through the area so that, you know, if you're in a car, moving on a road is not, moving around on a road is not too big a deal. But right now, Kohler does serve a big bicycle and pedestrian need. And then, of course, if you can get the neighborhood on board as much as possible. And given what I've been hearing, and, you know, at this point, you've divorced the two issues of expansion versus this immediate need. So the neighborhood hasn't, you know, basically, you've gotten, you know, what I see is support from the neighborhood. If that continues, I'll have no problem with supporting this project moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Dennis, questions?
Well, maybe it's not a question, but it sounded like the intent of the future hospital, the vision that you have, is basically to go to private rooms to provide higher quality care. And I'm hoping that the decisions you make about the quality of the rooms and the care that's provided for the clients of the hospital will also include the needs of people who are not as fortunate as the people who have really excellent healthcare insurance from the university community and the business sector, but who are forced to rely upon community funds and funding to pay for their assistance in medical care. If the hospital's vision is to go to all private rooms, I'm wondering how that's going to challenge community care for the entire Urbana population. And I guess that would be a discussion that I'd like to hear, your vision for totally inclusive care at your hospital and not turning it into a medical resort.
Yeah, we're a not-for-profit organization, and we're required by law, everyone's treated the same. Quite frankly, the private room issue is not about making it nicer for, it's really more about safety from an infection control standpoint, from a patient's safety standpoint. Private rooms are really contemporary medicine today. So that's the reason we're looking at it. It's not to make it, I mean, clearly, it is nicer for patients to have a private room, but that's not the reason we're doing it. And patients aren't assigned, you know, if you're a Medicaid, it doesn't, we don't look at that. Everyone's treated the same.
Very good. Other questions? Okay, I have two briefly that I don't really necessarily want you to answer tonight, but maybe to bring back some answers about next time. One, I just wondered if we could hear next time a little more from the traffic people about the scenario of the street vacations of Bucy and of Park Street. I know they really ran some numbers, and we got to see some things about closing Kohler, but so that we could kind of weigh that larger street closure versus the minimum street closure, that would be helpful. Also, I encourage you to tell us a bit more about the question that Dennis asked about access for the whole community. You know, the goal of the wonders of medicine at Kohler?
in the core of our community available to everyone in the community. So those are two things I'd like to hear more about. Bill, go ahead.
I think the issue of Park and Bucie being closed was addressed in the simulation tonight. It's very minimal impact, that traffic, quite frankly, is servicing existing parking lots and that sort of thing. And if there's concerns about is it going to impact signals on University or Lincoln or not, the big issue, the big impact is Church and Lincoln. But the closure of Bucie, if that's in fact where we go, or Park Street is, as mentioned in this report, access to support facilities for the hospital or for parking in those areas, so more or less like driveways. But from my perspective, it's good, if you're going to close Kohler, it's good that they also be part of the package because as University and Lincoln do have a lot of traffic, you know, turning left, especially in rush hour periods of time on those streets, is very difficult. So if we can minimize, you know, non-visitor, patient, you know, type of traffic on the streets, we're better off. So I, I mean, short of re-showing the simulation, the lack of vehicles on the streets is for a reason, and that's because if they're closed, it's going to be really for local deliveries, parking, and that sort of thing. So I, to answer your question, I think it was answered tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions community members have? Okay, so it sounds like we'll hear a presentation August 13th and then more later. Thank you very much, both.
Thank you for your time.
What we will do is take a three-minute, very short recess as we let people get seated, stand up, sit down. There's a few people in the hallway that want to come in. It is 15 after, it's 9:15, so I will call this meeting to order again at 9:18 promptly. Thank you. Okay, thank you all for coming back to order so fast. The next item of business on tonight's agenda is ordinance number 200707085. This will be an ordinance establishing a civilian review board for the city of Urbana. And what we're going to do first is hear from the mayor and staff on their presentation about the latest version, which there are copies of on the back table. And then we will take the public input that's about this topic. A lot of people have asked to speak at the time of the item. And then we'll have discussion and action here amongst the committee. Mayor?
Thank you. I would just like to point out, the number one reason for having a civilian review board as written in this ordinance is to provide a systematic means by which to achieve continuous improvement in police-community interactions. And I believe Urbana has an excellent police force. We have an excellent police chief. And our department realizes that they function best with the full cooperation of the community. And there were a number of suggestions from people that have been incorporated into this new document. Our email's been down, so I don't know if, I did put copies out there for you all. So if you don't have a copy, if there's action taken tonight, the next action would be at the city council meeting on August 6th. So there is time, if people read something and see something that they want to deal with, this isn't the last chance. And certainly, built into the ordinance is a review after two years. But if we get this started and we come across something that needs to be changed, we can certainly change it without having to wait for two years. So I would like to introduce Todd Rint, who is our human relations director. And Todd did the drafting of this and has some answers to some of the questions that were brought up at the last committee meeting and also last council meeting. Todd Rint.
Thank you very much. You know, I think it would be best to start off letting you know that as to the changes that have been made since the last draft, that was discussed at the last committee, I do have pretty much an exhaustive list of those changes that were made, and certainly would be very happy to read those to you. I think I have a list of about 15 of those if, after I finish those, the answers to the last committee's questions, if you'd like to hear those. First of all, we, I sought to try and work with our staff to try and answer some of the general questions that were asked. And it seems like the general questions were asked regarding why the hybrid version from the task force report was not retained, as far as the hybrid version of the task force that would be involved in investigating and also in reviewing the actions of the police chief. Secondly, the second question would be, why was subpoena power not retained in that ordinance that was presented? Thirdly, why was there language that threatens or warns against prosecution against those who willfully file false reports? And finally, why was the advocate provision deleted? So I'll take them in that order. Certainly, I have long answers to all of those questions. I'll try to give you the short answers. Basically, in regards to the hybrid investigatory review model, in light of the language that was agreed to back on January, I believe it's January 29, 2007, in the FOP side letter to a collective bargaining agreement with the Urbana Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 70, the agreement provided in part that the CRB will not conduct independent third-party investigations of an officer's conduct, period. Inquiries and concerns into the CPRB will be addressed by the chief of police or his designee. And looking at that language quite plainly, we saw, we had great difficulty in conceiving of an investigative scheme that would work, or a framework that would actually be able to not contravene that provision. And we were looking at the plain language of the contract. And so as a result of that, and as a result of that reading of the contract, we sought or endeavored to develop the ordinance that would have primarily a review authority and that would function effectively as a review body. And in fact, notwithstanding the language of the FOP side letter, we also consulted some secondary sources. And the weight of the secondary sources that we consulted, albeit there are many that are out there, for the ones that we did look at, seemed to show that the investigative authority generally resides in communities that are very large, or at least relatively large. You tend to need to expend budgetary resources for that, for some type of professional investigative staff, to make sure that the investigations are conducted in a very thorough, competent manner. Police misconduct investigations, as I'm sure everyone is aware, tend to be very, very complex animals, very different than many of the other types of investigations that you would normally conduct in the course of business, and they must be done with the utmost of care and the utmost of competence. And so upon reviewing all of these considerations, the language that we proposed basically called for review authority and did not indeed include that investigative authority. Basically, getting to the second question, why wasn't subpoena power retained? Basically, we're looking at subpoena powers being a derivative of investigatory power. Generally, when you're talking about subpoena power, you are talking about an investigative mechanism, a way of investigating someone's conduct with the intent of determining whether or not that conduct was correct. So we questioned the appropriateness of subpoena power for an agency that is explicitly foreclosed from performing investigative functions. And also, and I think you heard it somewhat reflected in Mr. O'Neill's comments last time, the net benefit of authorizing the access to information via subpoena power as opposed to the other mechanisms, we wonder whether or not there would be much net benefit, you know? Looking at the various scenarios in which a subpoena would be used, certainly, we saw that as being probably, when you're speaking about actual applications, probably the rare circumstance. And again, when we consulted with secondary sources, again, those secondary sources, again, the ones that we reviewed showed that subpoena power is something that, I think at the time, and this was an old study that I was looking at back from 2001, but I believe it was in about 40% of the jurisdictions, but the reports that they were getting from those jurisdictions is that it was very, very rarely used. I mean, the preference was for using the existing procedural mechanisms within the actual boards without using that subpoena power. So that, and again, I can go through the long answers, but I'm trying to summarize our answers at this point.
But it has been put back in?
Yes, it has. I just wanted to answer some of the questions that were made. Again, another question that was raised was why was there language that warned or threatened prosecution against those who are willfully filing false reports? Staff basically included that language regarding the prosecution of that individual pursuant to the explicit language of the FOP side letter. And again, I can note the excerpt from the side letter. It's from paragraph B. Complaints against, or complaints against an officer must be signed and sworn by a person with personal knowledge of the incident, and language will be included in the CPRB ordinance that false complaint shall be subject to prosecution. So again, looking at that language, we thought that the plain meaning basically said that we needed to include this in the ordinance, and certainly, we chose to do so. Finally, there were questions asked regarding the deletion of the advocate provision, and I think that that was a concern with staff, that we wanted to try and build some type of scheme or framework that would be more collaborative in nature. And the idea of advocates coming in and coming on either side, especially advocates, that there seemed to be no qualification of what would be considered and would not be considered acceptable as an advocate. So certainly, it seemed that as the language was written, someone could bring in an attorney and basically turn the process from a collaborative process to a process that would be necessarily adversarial at that point. And we thought that the better of what we were seeing would be to go forward without the advocate language. So wanted to address the major questions. I believe that addressed most of the major questions that came up at the last meeting. Since the last meeting, we've had much public input, as well as input from many of you here on the council, and have made modifications to the language. I would be perfectly happy to read through those if you'd like, just depending on what you would like at this point.
Raise your hand really briefly if you'd like to read through those changes in detail now. Any council members? Okay. Don't need to, thank you.
Right. So I think at this point, I'm willing to take any questions that you have.
Okay. We're not going to take council member questions first because we have public input first. We're going to give the public a chance to give their input and ask questions. Then we'll open the floor here for questions, amendments, action. Our first speaker is Robert Dunn. If you could come up and have a seat at the table and state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes. And I'll ask everyone to be brief, to not repeat comments that other people might have made because it is already 9:30. The next speaker on deck who should be ready is Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Go ahead, Robert.
My name is-
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm from South Urbana. Wanted to clarify some things. I want to apologize to the council and to the audience for implying that if a civilian review board was established, that the crime rate was going to go up astronomically. I spoke with the chief of police of Iowa City, and he told me that there was, there was not a correlation between the crime rate and the civilian review board. So I want to apologize to everyone for that. One of the reasons why you're on this board or council, and one of the things that you did before you took office was to swear an oath to defend the Constitution, which protects my right to life, liberty, pursuit of happiness. And part of the pursuit of happiness is the right to acquire and maintain property. These folks out here protect that right as well. If some thug from wherever breaks into my home, I want to be sure that the people protecting my right to property have all the necessary resources to make sure that that guy does not do that again. My concern is with taking out the provision where if someone makes a false complaint, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I did not read if there was a severe enough penalty because people's jobs are on the line. And if someone is making a complaint based on personal, if they have a personal agenda with an individual officer, or if they have a political agenda, which from what I've heard from a lot of the comments the last two weeks, there is a political agenda against the entire department. What would, what is going to be in force to make sure that these officers are protected from false complaints? And it can't just be a simple city fine. It needs to be either a misdemeanor or felony. I personally would agree with a felony because even other cities with civilian review boards have stipulated that it would, it's a felony in their city to make a false accusation. That's my main concern right now. And so I just, if it isn't there, good, if there isn't a severe penalty for people who make false complaints, I am demanding that this council put it in. Because this is not a joke. People's lives, livelihoods, and careers are on the line here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council member questions? Charlie, if there's one question, Mr. Dunn, could I?
Robert, thanks for your comment earlier. Have you, have you looked at the city goals, Urbana city goals, that we put together for this council and mayor?
No, sir.
They're on the webpage. The first one, the top one, is related to public safety. And in our first two budgets on this council, we hired five police officers. We increased, you know, we enabled the police department to go back to doing some things that they weren't able to do. We now have five beats instead of four. But this council's first priority is public safety. It's the very first thing in our 14-goal point. So I can reassure you, we think we have a very professional police department. We want to keep it that way, and we want to support them every way we can. I just thought I wanted to reassure you that that is our number, you know, our number one priority.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Next, we have Dr. Evelyn Underwood. If you could come forward after that, we'll have Julia Watkins. So Julia, you are on deck. Doc, Dr. Underwood. Oh, okay, thank you, Julia, yeah. Dr. Underwood, go right ahead, have a seat, and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Do I need to give my address and all those?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. I'm Dr. Evelyn Underwood. My address is 1309 West Tremont Street in Urbana. I wanted to keep my name in, with the secretary of the clerk to speak. However, at this time, I'm not really ready. I did call one of my council persons today because I could not find this, you know, on the website. So I'm not prepared. And I see that the gentleman, the staff person, did not answer whether he kept those concerns in. So at this time, I'm not ready to speak on the issue. Because you stated what the questions were, but only one time when the mayor asked you did you say that that one was kept in. But the other three, I don't know if was in here or not because as I stated, I just received this when I came tonight, and I could not find it. So I can't talk intelligently. However, I would still like to say that I support in principle the CRB, but because I don't know what the content is at this point, I'll just wait and speak at a later time.
Okay.
But I wanted to just come up here since I did give my name.
Any questions for Dr. Underwood? Okay, thanks. And this will be back August 6th. If it is sent to council, that would be the week that it would be here, in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you. I need an opportunity to go through it thoroughly.
Absolutely. We'd love to hear-
Now, if we have, if I have questions before August, could I call the staff people, or should I wait and speak here?
Yeah, you could. Mayor, do you want to address that?
We did put it on the webpage. It should be on there. We put it on on Friday, I believe.
Well, I did today.
But we've had some computer problems, so maybe that got it fouled up. But certainly, if you have any questions, you can call, and we'll try to answer your questions. You don't have to wait to come to a council meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Julia Watkins actually has not to speak, but just to have her name entered in the record in support of the civilian review board. The next speaker then is Aaron Scully Andrews, who wants to speak in support. Eric Scully Andrews, if you could come forward, if you're still here? Okay, he might not be here. He was in support of the ordinance. The next speaker tonight is Ricky Baldwin, who wanted to speak in support of the ordinance. On deck after that will be Rick Stewart. On deck after that will be Rick Stewart. Ricky, go ahead. Good evening.
Thanks. Sorry I wasn't here before when you discussed this. I was out of town. But I just, so I want to thank the mayor and the city council for this whole process. Sincerely, I don't mean that glibly at all. I think the openness of this process has been really nice to see, as a person who lives in Urbana. Sorry, I didn't give my address. 801 East California. And so I guess I'm speaking of the hearings we had, and then the task force, which I very much appreciated being able to be on, and the negotiating with the city, negotiating with the FOP over this, and these revisions too. I very much appreciate the revisions that were made to this document. I think it's a much better document than before. And I'm very glad to see it. It looks like, apparently, the news gazette may be pleasantly surprised, I think they said, to see some things that we've been talking about all along. But anyway, I was just glad to see the improvement. My main concern when I look at this, you know, I don't know what will work and what won't work. I don't have a crystal ball, right? But I just go back to the three main goals that the coalition that initially proposed this had for an effective board, from looking at other cities where they have these, and talking to folks at the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, probably some of the same folks that Mr. Rent talked to. But the three main goals that we had put forward from the start were the independence of the board, and it looks like this board is, this proposal is very good on that point. Just to make sure what we're looking for is an unbiased appraisal of any issue. The second one is the subpoena power, and I'm glad to see that back in here for witnesses and documents. Just the idea being that, hopefully, there would never be, but in case there were any difficulty getting to talk to anyone or to get any documents. Anyway, I'm pleased that those are here, that that's back in. Hopefully, it might even help people get off work if they have to be a witness to say, hey, I was subpoenaed. You know, what can I do? The third one, though, is the independent investigator. And I understand that's one of the restrictions that was placed on this in the FOP contract, in the side letter at least. But I'd just like to talk about it another minute, if possible, and I'll tell you my thinking on it. So hopefully, you know, if there's a better way, I have a suggestion, but if maybe there's a better way to do it than I'm thinking of. I think the concern here is that there may be witnesses that the police might not interview for whatever reason, or that even the person making the complaint may not know about, or may not know how to get hold of them, to bring them to any hearing, to give their information, their input. And, you know, of course, there may always be that, and the board might not know. But if the board suspects, I think in a rare, very rare situation, the board may feel that there's a need for further investigation, and to try to find some of these witnesses. Of course, the board can talk to them if they know about them. But if they don't know about them, they can't talk to them. So the idea of the independent investigator is to find, if someone to be able to find potential witnesses. And I'm reading this, and the way this proposal is written, the way the ordinance is written, and the way the police contract, the side letter at least, is written. And I understand that the board can't do independent investigations, and certainly, they can't even have communications with any third party regarding a complaint that's active. That's in the section 1925(c). My, and I appreciate, I should say, Mr. Rent's very thoughtful comments on this and the research that he did about, and particularly, I think it's true that for a board that does actually do full-scale investigations, that's mainly in big cities. What we had hoped to get in a board as a coalition, I think, is, in the very rare circumstance that I was talking about, that you look through all the documents and talk to all the witnesses you can find, and you think there's, for some reason, you have reason to believe, some case-specific reason, to believe that there's something out there that you're not getting, and that an independent investigator would help. There are some boards that have this power to do this in that case. And when we talked about this on the task force, I believe we talked about this, you know, probably not arising maybe for years. But in the one case that it would happen, I think if it were your own situation, you'd be glad if they had that ability to go out and beat the bushes, as it were, to find out if there's anything else out there. So we're talking about a rare occurrence, I think, here. And I don't think the members of the board themselves, the idea behind hiring investigators, that the members of the board themselves wouldn't necessarily be able to do this investigation, or, you know, qualified or even have the time to do it. These people will be volunteers and have other jobs. But my suggestion would be that at the conclusion of an investigation, this is just an idea that I have, you know, there may be better ones. But in section 1933, you have all the different determinations that the board can make. C is the determination that the case be remanded for further investigation, and that's to the police, the way it's written now, back to the police chief. And I would just suggest that there might be an option to either do that, you know, to the police chief, or maybe to remand it for further investigation to the police chief, and/or, I guess, to request an independent investigator, not necessarily the board doing it, but making that request. You know, I don't know who would be the appropriate. Maybe the mayor's office should appoint someone to do it. But again, I don't know if this is the best way to do it. The objective is just to have the option, if there is something out there, to be able to go and look for it. So that's my main comment. Of course, I would prefer that the board be able to just directly hire it. But since that's out, that's an idea. I had one other quick comment, if I could, on section 1934, the report to the chief of police. And maybe this is, maybe I'm just not clear on how this is. The last sentence of A, I believe it is, or the last, yes, the last sentence of A, "A thorough and objective written summary of this discussion," this is in the case that the CRB report and the chief of police investigation differ, otherwise it wouldn't be necessary, "that they should have a discussion about the differences, try to sort that out, try to resolve it, and a thorough and objective written summary of this discussion shall be transmitted to the mayor by the HRO within 10 working days of the discussion." So I might understand that the HRO would write this also. If not, I guess my question is, who would write it? I see that the HRO would transmit it to the mayor, and I guess my question is, does that also mean the HRO would write this summary?
We're envisioning the human relations officer will be the staff person.
Okay. So would write this. Okay. Thank you. Because, you know, I guess you don't want a situation where there are two conflicting objective reports. So, and those are my main comments. I really, I think I like this new document very much. I'd just like to say again, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. But I am still concerned, again, about the third of the three main objectives that we had, the independent investigator, if there's a way to, in some other means, find more information.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Baldwin. Any questions? Charlie?
Real quick, Rick. Off the top of my head, I can't remember the Iowa City ordinance. How similar is this to Iowa City's?
It's quite similar. They do have the authority to hire an investigator there, I believe, in Iowa City. And I talked to, I believe, the former chair of the police review board there. He said they almost never, actually, they had not used it. What, he also told me that, and you know, it's a point worth mentioning, that in almost every case, their investigation agreed with the police, you know, investigation. But it was that, those few times when it didn't agree, that they really thought it was valuable to have the police review board. But I'm, you know, it's been a while, but I'm almost sure that they have this, that authority. They have a budget every year. I don't believe it's written into the ordinance. But the budget includes money, yeah, actually, you know, the money includes, the budget includes money to hire an independent investigator, and that money just rolls over, I believe, or goes back into the fund or something like that. But I don't believe they've ever used it. Maybe once, he told me. I don't recall. But rarely, at least.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks very much, Ricky.
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rick Stewart, and the person on deck after that will be Neil Parthen. Mr. Stewart, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the committee.
Sure. Rick Stewart, I'm an attorney with the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council out of Springfield, Illinois. Really, I mean, there's a lot I could say about citizens' police review here in Urbana. And there's a lot I did say about it during negotiations, and we had a lot of talks with the city. And we saw the ordinance the last time, and it seemed to have fit with everything that had been discussed with the city, our concerns. Some portions of the law, one quick note, the portion of the law referring to sworn affidavits, it's actually in the Uniformed Police Officers Disciplinary Act that all complaints against a police officer will contain a sworn affidavit. The reason that we had proposed the language of the warning about perjury and subject to prosecution was we thought that, we thought that if you were going to require somebody to sign a sworn affidavit, you should have the information for them on there, what that means. We wanted people to know what it meant. And most complaints have the sworn affidavit portion. So it wasn't anything that's not already in the law, that we just bought it to the city's attention. But I actually read the ordinance for the first time yesterday. I was able to find it online yesterday afternoon. And we did have, I did have some questions on 19-26. There's a provision in there that states the CPRB, by a majority of vote, shall have access to complaints and supporting documents to the extent these items weren't gathered in the course of the police department's investigation. The concern of the FOP is why? What's the purpose of having these documents if the CPRB is only reviewing the investigation done by the police department, mainly by Chief Beely? Why would they need access to these other documents? The only, one other thing we did notice that we think needs to be, that I feel needs to be addressed, is under 1928, it says the complainant may dictate the complaint and then sign it. We still think that for the complainant's own protection and the requirement of the Uniformed Police Officers Act, there needs to be, they need to be somehow told that it's a sworn statement, and that, you know, and what that means. We did notice a possible, we weren't sure when we reviewed this, whether or not in 1932d, hearings shall be conducted in closed sessions, and members of the CPRB shall keep confidential all matters disclosed during the hearing. We weren't sure if that was meant to be discussed or disclosed. It was just, it's just a question. We're not sure. The other thing in here is, there's a provision under 1936 that says, "No police officer who is subject of a complaint shall be required to appear or testify." The side letters, I believe it's in the side letter or in the contract, I'll check the reference. I want to make sure I get the right section. Article 22 of the contract refers to police officers subject to a CPRB proceeding, not the subject of a complaint. It's more expansive. I guess our main concerns at this point about the new language is, we just have some questions about whether or not the CPRB will be doing investigations. And the other question is, if, it was mainly about subpoena power. Subpoena power goes back to about 1200 AD in England. They couldn't get people to show up. They lived in other counties. So somebody in the Chancery Court got an idea that will make them appear by making them pay, I think it was 10 shillings, or something like that. But subpoena means, it's Latin for under penalty. But nowhere in the ordinance is what the penalty would be defined. And so I guess that's just a question we have. If someone does not show up and is subpoenaed, and they still do not show up, what will the penalty be? And also, we believe that the contract, we just wanted to make it clear that our understanding of it was that no police officer would be subpoenaed. And we just wanted to make sure that that was still the understanding of the ordinance as read. That was one of the main questions we had. And I'm sure someone's probably got questions for me.
Okay. Great. Yeah, I see. Danielle, go ahead.
Thank you for your comments. A kind of overall question, it's a News Gazette article in January said, after the FOP contract was complete, that essentially, the quote from the FOP was that they're not very comfortable, extremely comfortable with moving forward with a CPRB, given the constraints of the FOP contract. Given that this ordinance essentially addresses and incorporates the constraints of the FOP contract, language of the task force, et cetera, and kind of marries these two things, is it the FOP's position that you're supportive of the ordinance before you?
That would be the case for the ordinance that was here, was it two weeks ago? This new draft of the ordinance does raise concerns and questions, because it's not really clear to us whether or not it is the city council's intention to subpoena officers and to have the CPRB conduct an independent investigation.
Okay.
And so that's questions we feel need to be answered.
Okay. In terms, I'm pretty sure I can speak, and we could clarify this, that officers will not be subpoenaed. And that was clear from my reading of the ordinance, but if we need to tighten that up, we could, we could make that clear. That's all for now. Thank you.
Any other questions, Charlie?
I think one of the issues with the whole issue of subpoena power, or whatever, is how, without that kind of wording in there, how would we get somebody to actually appear who felt, or was basically a reluctant witness, somebody who fears retaliation or whatever? And going back to what Ricky said earlier, you know, the whole idea, well, I had to be there. I had to go speak to the commission. I mean, that's a concern that I have, is that somebody, you know, somebody needs that for their own protection to some extent. And without some kind of wording, you know, that would require their presence, you know, what would you suggest in there, in place of the word subpoena?
I don't pretend to have any answer to that question, other than my, our concern about the subpoena, and this is maybe just me as a lawyer thinking out loud, that I'd want to know what the penalty would be. I mean, there's numerous types of penalties, and city attorney went into some of that the last time. But as far as, if what I'm hearing from the city council is true, officers won't be subpoenaed. So as far as my aspect of that, I guess it's really, that's up for other attorneys, and I guess that's up to the city council to determine whether that would take place. But we did have some questions. And there are a lot of things I could go through with this, that some of the things that were actually in here were questions we had raised during our negotiation process. We had asked the city, you know, what the ramifications of these things would be. You know, and I've had experience in the past with civilian review boards, not only in Illinois, but also in New York, where I'm from. So, been doing this for years, and actually, one of the secondary sources that he's probably referring to is a friend of mine from law school. So...
Other questions? None? Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Stewart. There's a few people who did not want to be here, but did want to be on the record. Dean Hazen wanted to not address the committee, but asked that opposition be entered in the record in opposition to this ordinance. Shannon Wolf, similarly, did not want to address the committee, but asked that their position be entered against... be entered against the ordinance. Our last speaker of the evening is Neil Parthen.
Just in support or in opposition? In support.
In support, okay. Speaker in support, Neil Parthen. That is all of the comment cards that I have this evening, so at this point, we will open the floor for committee member questions of our staff first, and then we can take amendments and action. Danielle, go ahead.
I hope my voice actually holds out for this part. I was trying to talk to 100 people this weekend without amplification, so here I am. First, I want to thank Todd Rent and Ron O'Neill and the mayor, they spent a lot of time with me explaining and responding to my concerns. I want to thank the chief of police for his leadership on this, he's been supportive from the beginning of this in principle. I have, mostly I have questions, I'm fairly supportive of this, I feel like we, basically, we had January support, we had August support from the task force, August '06, January support from the FOP, at least according to the News Gazette. And so, then we kind of had an ordinance that went beyond that, that really lost its public support, and now I feel like we're back to one that's more of a consensus document. And I do think we can address the concerns that the FOP brought up this evening. The first, so the questions I have are, let's see, what's, where should I start with? I have some questions of the attorney, and I have some questions of the chief of police in terms of police procedure. So I'll start with the attorney questions, and then maybe I can get to the chief question. The attorney questions are, what would the charge be in the case of a false allegation? What's, what's on the statutes? I'm assuming it would be state statutes, it would be addressed, could you give us a picture of that? And I'll just take one question at a time, because I kind of have a list.
Sure. You know what, it's been a while since I've looked at the criminal code. Something of filing a false statement, making a false report, I can't, to be honest with you, I don't know what the exact charge would be. I know that there's one possible, and I just don't know off the top of my head what it is.
Okay.
Maybe you could bring back the...
Yeah, some of these questions, some of these questions you may not be able to address tonight, and we can just say you'll get back to us, we have two weeks before our committee council meeting, so I'm comfortable.
Absolutely, I'd be more than happy to, any answer, question I, I can't answer for you this evening, be more than happy to provide an answer to, prior to your, your final vote, if any, in a couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Chief, could, could you answer, oh, I thought you were coming to answer that.
No.
The second, the second question is, there's a, the section 1937, it says that basically the process could be suspended in the case where civil action was threatened. That was one of, it was either underway, or it was threatened like a civil case against the city. When you say that, when you wrote that, do you mean formal, formally threatened, like there's been a letter from an attorney to the city, or do you mean presumed? Like there could be a threat, and it's your professional opinion that therefore we should suspend it? Could you clarify?
In all honesty, it would depend on the circumstances. What I envision by that is, there could be a set of circumstances where, knowing what I know, or at least based on my experience and education, that a given set of circumstances, that litigation would be likely, not absolute, but likely. But more apt would be that I've received either some correspondence from a plaintiff's attorney, or an actual complaint, a suit has been served upon the city, which would go to the clerk's office first, but then, at least, my desire is that it would hit my desk the next point, and at that point, my hat shifts, then, you know, we had a discussion about the different hats that I wear, my hat shifts, then I become the attorneys for the city government, and concerned about protecting the government and the municipality from liability.
So, so when you say threatened, it potentially could be both, both you thinking that, you know, there's a formal threat, you received a letter, or, or potentially presumed. I guess my question is, some of these cases, and talking to the chief of police, it sounds like a lot of them, oftentimes an apology is issued, and it's about, you know, someone feeling insulted, et cetera. So in those cases, that's not really one of the situations we're looking at. But in cases where there was particular use of force that someone felt was unjustified, in those cases, there certainly could be civil action. So I guess my concern with the, with the vagueness of that is that anything other than, you know, basic insults, or something that's really minor, really could be presumed to be something that could be actionable in a court of law. And so how would you, as the attorney in that situation, how would you judge when you're going to suspend the CPRB process, and when you're going to allow it?
Well, among other things, I'd be considering the magnitude of the liability against the city. I would be considering the nature of the complaint, or the incident, the likelihood that were there litigation, that there would be a judgment against the city. I would be looking at the circumstances surrounding the incident that is alleged. There would be a whole process that, you know, I'd have to sit down and look at the whole scenario, and the totality of the circumstances, and say, how bad is this for the city? What, you know, is this, is this something where we have, there may have, may have been some misconduct, but the exposure for us is relatively small? Or is this something like, wow, we are looking at, at, you know, one huge piece of litigation that is going to be time-consuming and costly?
So in that case, in the second case, is it your intention that we would wait till the statute of limitations ran out? What is it, two years, I think it's two years in the state, before a complainant would actually be able to appeal the, the process?
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
In the case where we, where you judged that it, that this, the complaint that is alleged could also be brought to court, that the city could be brought to court over that, although it hadn't been, there was no letter from an attorney, there was no formal threat of that, would you wait two years for the statute of limitations to run out before, like, at what point do you, I mean, do you decide that actually you're going to let this thing go through? See what I'm saying? You get into this murky water where things could kind of be caught up in, we think this could expose us to civil litigation, so we're not going to hear these kinds of things, and then the complainant has to wait two years till the statute of limitations runs out, which actually happens in this county in some cases, so I, it's, you know, it's important to look at this.
I understand your concern, and, you know, it's, it's an appropriate question, but, and you probably are not going to like this answer, but it depends on the circumstances, it really does. I'd have to look and see, like, well, what is the likelihood? Just because we do have exposure doesn't necessarily mean that someone's going to file suit. I would need to look at the people involved. If there is an attorney that contacts me, it may be a conversation that is had. I certainly have been part of instances where settlements were negotiated prior to litigation being filed, okay, because the city determined that, or my employer determined that there was some exposure there, and, and we needed to settle this before undergoing expensive litigation. So that can happen. The other possibility is that I might look at it and say, there's exposure, but it's unlikely that we're going to actually enter it in, in litigation. I don't know, and, and in some instances, it's going to be a guess. I mean, really come down to my best guess, given my, my experience, I certainly would not, as a practice, I mean, anybody can be sued about anything, so I certainly, as a practice, would not say, well, you know, all potential exposure gets suspended until the statute of limitations runs. That would be impractical, and it would, you know, do violence to this ordinance. What I was looking at more is that the instance that is more likely to occur, which is that we do get sued while this process is taking place. And I would want to have the ability, as the city's attorney, to say, wait, our participation in this process needs to stop for a period of time until we can determine what, if anything, would be in the city's best interest with regard to this litigation. It's just a prophylactic measure.
Yeah, and that's understandable, it's just the first I'm unclear about. Just, I'm, I'm going to try to be quick and just get to the top points. The second is, we have this, the issue, which is included in the FOP contract, that, you know, it's a signed and sworn affidavit from the complainant, and therefore, there could be prosecution based on, you know, an intentionally false allegation. At the same time, there's a section 1932I, which says that nothing in the kind of hearings and et cetera, in this process could be used as evidence in criminal or civil court. And I see those two things as in contradiction. On the one hand, it can't be used in court, on the other hand, we're saying you could be prosecuted. And so, could you clarify how those aren't a contradiction?
Well, let me, I'm going to give you my honest appraisal. I don't know that I carries a lot of weight, that subsection I. It's one thing for us to have an ordinance that says that this information is not going to be used in a civil or criminal proceeding, but the truth of the matter is, my experience as, in litigation is, if someone is seeking, an attorney is seeking transcript, or documentation, or sworn testimony, or complaint, or whatever, and uses our, our rules for discovery, our civil rules for discovery, there's a good likelihood they're going to get it. If we don't provide it, there's a good likelihood that court is going to compel it, particularly if we were talking about some federal civil rights litigation, some order of file action under section 1983. We're going to have to give it up. And that means that if a state's attorney, or an attorney general, or anyone else who has, a US attorney for that matter, who has prosecutorial powers, says that they want to get something, or compel testimony for a grand jury, I, I think that they can do it. And that's my, my honest legal opinion.
Just a follow-up question to that, which is, would it be the city who prosecutes intentionally false allegations? Who would it be?
It would be the state's attorney's office.
Okay, so the state's attorney could, could make a choice at that case, okay.
They would assess and determine what, if any, charges they wanted to bring. There may be instances, depending on what the falsehood was, I mean, if there was, I would think if there was a, this is not a matter of someone being wrong or mistaken, this is someone who willfully lies in their complaint.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
Who intentionally, it's pretty clear that it's intentionally lying, and that you would have to prove intention. Let me just ask the chief a question along those lines, which is, when it, if an officer were to, would to lie in a report, same situation, intentionally filed some kind of false report, what's, is that also something that would be prosecutable by the state's attorney? So it's kind of an even playing field in terms of both officers and complainants?
Yes, in fact, it would be more than an even playing field, because there would be internal discipline up and including losing your job and possible criminal prosecutions, so I think it's more than level.
Okay. And there's also, of course, official misconduct, which is when you're operating in official capacities. Let's see, since I'm asking the chief some questions, a couple of things, with the complainant, what's the current police department policy in terms of complaint and privacy? So we've definitely made it clear with the CPRB, you know, officer's names aren't going to be brought forward, complainant's names also are not going to be brought forward in the public annual reports from the CPRB. Within, when your office conducts internal investigations of a complaint, do other officers have access to the information about that investigation? Are, are they allowed to speak to one another about that investigation and share information?
Generally, what happens is, the investigation comes into my office, it's assigned to a lieutenant. That investigation then deals with the specific officers who are named, or who are involved, they might be witness officers, and then that information is brought back up through the chain, through the lieutenant to my office. So, is that information sitting around? Is it posted? Do they have access to that information? Certainly at the lieutenant level, or the assistant chief level, they do, through my office, but at the officer and sergeant level, they generally do not.
Can, can an officer come to a lieutenant and ask about the details of an internal investigation, if he or she is not involved with that investigation, and get information from lieutenant?
They can ask, I doubt they would get the information. The, the lieutenants who conduct those investigations understand that they're private personnel issues, and they don't discuss those with officers who are not involved.
Okay. That's department policy, as you're saying? Or is that...
It's department practice.
Practice, okay. Let's see, what's, in, there's a section 1937, and this is also for the chief, and it's just trying to understand the current process. Okay, just a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
A complaint comes, fills out a form at the police department, gives it to you, then you find out that, that this, the situation also has a criminal investigation underway.
Mm-hmm.
Do you suspend the complaint process at that point, until the criminal investigation is finished, before you finish the complainant process and provide a response, in your current policy?
It depends on the situation, let me give you an example, it's the easiest way to explain that. If the basis of the complaint is a matter of law, my vehicle was searched illegally, for instance, and that course, that, that case, that complaint, is on its way to court, where a judge will in fact decide that question of law, whether the search and seizure was legal or not, then in that case, yes, it may be suspended. Take that same case, though, and say, the officer searched my car, but I'm not complaining about that, they were rude while they searched my car, then we could go ahead and proceed with the complaint, because it's not a matter of law, it's not something that, that the decision I make will affect, or could affect, the outcome of the court case. So there's no easy answer to it.
Yeah, well, that actually makes, that's, that's pretty clear, that they could be involved with the case. Would, is it your understanding, because it talks about, you know, the chief of police and the city attorney could suspend proceedings, would that also be the same, would you use the same criteria with the CPRB, as you just described to me now, with your current complaint process?
If the question is, if there's an ongoing case or investigation with the same criteria, absolutely. Because if, if I am able to complete the case, then, then the CRB should be able to do their work if it's, if it's appealed.
Okay. And just, this is my final question for now, this is for the, our attorney. In 1926A, there's a section, I'm, I'm confused, and I think it's actually a contradiction that isn't meant to be here, which is, it's a pretty much midpoint of that paragraph, it says, you know, to the extent that the following items were not gathered in the course of the police department's investigation, by a majority vote, the CPRB shall have access to complaints, and then it says a number of other things. But it's my understanding that the CPRB gets copies of all complaints as they come in. They may not hear them, but the, but the board actually sees all the complaints, not just the ones that are appealed. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, that is correct.
Because it sounds like, you know, it's forwarded from the human relations officer to the civilian review board, and it's, it's not forwarded, hey, a complaint came in, it's my understanding, the actual complaint is forwarded.
Right.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was correct. Thanks for your time and clarifications.
Okay, next, Lynn, go ahead, Ben Dennis.
After review of this current ordinance, there are, I see that there are 23 substantive changes, which I think are a significant number of changes, and there's been dramatic, I think, really sway of this, from the 30,000-foot level, which the mayor even said, we're shooting for a 30,000-foot level, a review board, and I think we're coming closer to shooting for a 30,000-foot level, a review board," and I think we're coming closer to ground level. Of the 23, I am comfortable with 18. I have five that I am concerned with, that I think take us into the mire, and take us into the detail. Because I reflect back on when we initially talked about this as a council in a caucus, and just as a group, and one of our goals, and we wanted a collaborative approach. You know, we wanted something, I thought, that was measured, and that fit our city and our community. And I've heard many times tonight that we have a great police department. We're proud of it, we're proud of the work they do, not that there maybe haven't been mistakes made in the past, but overall, many of us have made that comment. So therefore, I think it's very important for us to step into this with that in mind. If we had a community that was fraught with police issues, and where we just had situation after situation, then, you know, I think maybe I could be more likely to go down this path. But that's not where we're at. Where we're at is, we're standing here with a strong police force, frankly, that we all support, and have shown support for, as Charlie mentioned earlier tonight, and I think that this is example of overfixing. You know, haven't you ever tinkered with something, and you just kept working on it, working on it, and pretty soon it fell apart, and you wished you'd stop sooner? I feel like that's where we're at. And I would feel like also, this council, we, that old saying, "You make the bed you lie in." And so I think we need to think about that very hard. And I think, again, we want to step into this in a, in a kind of a step process, test the waters, you know? Use, our plan that we had two weeks ago, I thought, fit the bill, and I was prepared to support it. The concerns that I have now, I'll point out, because I've got them all marked, and it'll be quick. Section 1926, page 3, I think that the extent to the detail of this one is a little bit concerning. It points out medical records, and I think we ought to just be very cautious about medical records with all the HIPAA laws. And again, I think this is an example of that 30,000-foot level kind of gone awry. And I wonder, you know, if we end up, and I'll speak to this later, but just now, with subpoena power, you know, whose medical records are we gonna subpoena? If it's the complainant, then that complainant would give us those medical records, absolutely. So, whose are we gonna subpoena? Another concern I have is 1925, and just the whole issue of confidentiality, and talking about it, you know, publicly, you know, not specific officers' names, I know that's, that wouldn't happen, or complainant's names, but I think in general, you know, this takes away the council's role. It's the council's role to look at the data that the civilian review board gives to us, and then we evaluate the role of the chief, and the performance of the chief. And I think that's up for us to talk about, and do the evaluation of, and I think that's, as an elected official, that's best where that role should be.
You referred to two parts, the first part and the second part.
Well, I think they both go together. The, well, really, the second part, "This provision is not intended to prohibit CRB members from expressing opinions regarding general patterns and trends, procedural matters." And I think that we were better off with the statement that was deleted, "Members shall maintain absolute confidentiality of any and all CRB proceedings and deliberations." Again, I think this paragraph, that's our job. We should be evaluating those patterns and trends, not the public. We should be doing that, but then, in our public way, we handle that. Again, I think that takes it to the detail that I didn't believe was our original intent. And then skipping a few pages, because all these other changes I feel comfortable with, but getting to, again, 1934, "Report to the chief of police. To the extent permitted by law, the written findings and conclusions shall be public record." And of course, I do agree with, if we end up doing that, that the record should not identify subject officers. But generally, that statement bothers me, because I think it, again, takes it out of the realm of the city council, and puts it more into the public, which I'm not sure that's what we intended. And then finally, in section 1936, of course, this really talks about the subpoena power, and I think the subpoena power takes away the collaborative intent that we started off with, and I think it was already said earlier, I really don't need to repeat it, what is the penalty? And at what cost to Urbana? Is the, you know, what would we have to do, either to follow up on somebody that did not show up after, or as they were subpoenaed? And those are my concerns. So again, 23 of the changes, you know, a lot of them I can totally go along with, but those five give me cause for great stress, and again, I think, you know, it worries me. Let's just be very cautious about how we proceed.
Lynn, is it, you have two objections on 1936? Is that what, only counted four here?
I had two noes, I think, maybe, with another one. But 1936, I mean, let's see if I've got a fifth one.
You've got two parts, you mentioned two parts to that, but-
Yes, so there's maybe two parts to that. I've got the concern on 1934, "Report to the chief of police."
Right.
I've got the-
25B, 26.
Oh, you know what? The fifth one is, and I think that they do need to be told this is a sworn statement, and that's in 1928. I missed that one. 1928, page 4.
Yeah, I guess I read 1920, I thought it still says it, "The complaint shall be a sworn statement attesting to the truthfulness of the allegations made." That's not strong enough to you?
Do you think it's important, we took out the word "warning," and "willfully." So, I mean, I, it just worries me a little that it's not strong enough, but-
Maybe the word "willfully," maybe that, I wonder if that's legally a better word to keep in there? Let Ron and Todd figure that one out.
Because it's very clear that it is willful. I mean, that's, I think that's everyone's intent.
It looks like we took out "willful" and added "intentional." Ron, did you have a comment on that one?
I just want to say, I can make an argument either way. My preference would be willful, only because you can intentionally make a statement, and maybe not intend that it be false, and I don't know how much that's clear for people. The other part to consider is that some people legally don't, what does "willful" mean? Some people may not really understand what it means to be willful about something. I understand it, because it's used in a lot of other language, so, you know, you-
Let me, would it be better to say "willful," or "willful," or intentional? Willful or intentionally false allegations? Would you accept that, Lynn?
Yes, I'd be more comfortable.
I'm just trying to find a way, okay. So, how do others feel about that? Changing to "willful," "willful or intentionally false allegations," is that okay? Would that, would that work for you, Ron?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Dennis, I think you had the next-
Just gonna deal with one of the, one of your five.
Thank you.
Think about the others here.
Dennis Roberts.
Well, it's incredible how much really positive energy has gone into this creation of this document, and we're getting so close to being complete. There were a lot of good comments and questions, and I appreciate all of Danielle's questions that she raised, and I got her email, I saw Ricky Baldwin's email as well, and all of them were thoughtful, and I think that ultimately, the document here that we have before us is very close to being very adequate. A few things, and they're really kind of other kinds of orient, other kinds of questions that came to my mind, and it really has maybe more to do with the procedure of recording information in the CRB meetings. In section 1921, it talks about the composition of the civilian review board. In number C, it says the mayor shall designate a chair and a vice chair. I'm wondering if it's important to designate a secretary? Who is gonna be the person who is going to be recording the conversation, and how are they going to be keeping record? Is it only gonna be through recorded, okay, well, the mayor's got, has the answer to that?
We have, our boards and commissions have secretaries.
All right, it's not specifically stated here, Ron.
No, no, it's a staff secretary.
All right. Okay.
Their minutes are taken, things are recorded, so it's not up to the board members, they're free to discuss and ask questions.
That seems important to me. Okay, thank you.
Ron, did you have something to add to that?
I just wanted to also add that, more than likely, in a formal hearing process, there would be a stenographer, or it would be video recorded, or audio recorded, some form of preservation.
All right. Since it wasn't stipulated specifically, I had to ask that question. And my second question is, the members of the board go through a training process. That seems totally adequate and appropriate, so they can function efficiently, and understand the problems and situations that come before them. Then, when we, really, the whole process, the initial hope is that the complaint will actually go to a kind of a mediator role, there'll be a mediation role, where their complaint will be discussed, and there'll be some kind of resolution. It does, it's not clear, I guess, the, where the mediator comes from, who's qualified to be a mediator, and how they're chosen from the community, or are these professional mediators? And because it didn't describe, or define how one is a mediator, and what are the requirements of it, I thought I should ask.
Todd?
You know, I think it was the intent as we were drafting this, perhaps to leave out some of the operational details, amongst them being those types of details regarding the mediator. I think it could be, as well as whether or not stenographers are used within the review process, that could be included as a part of the rules of the operational rules of the CRB, certainly, you know, certainly if you wanted to include that, if the council chose to include it, then it can certainly be included in the ordinance, but at least it was our intent at this point to leave sort of the finer details of the operations, such as the stenographer, such as, as you just mentioned, to those, that rulemaking process.
So it's not the intent, then, that the city would require a professional mediator?
Certainly, yes.
In section 1930, item C, "Mediation shall be conducted at no cost to the complainant or officers by trained or experienced mediators from among a list selected by the city, or a conflict resolution program approved by the city. The mediator shall have experience dealing with law enforcement-related issues."
Okay.
So it is spelled out.
Okay, that's excellent. Dennis, further questions?
No.
Okay. Other members? Heather?
I, as most people would know, I'm against the civilian review board, and have been since the task force brought it to the council's attention. If I were to fill out one of those yellow sheets, as some of you have, and brought it to the clerk, I would ask to speak in front of the council, and I would say that we trust our officers to carry a gun, we trust our officers to handcuff people, but we don't trust them to fill out a, to fill out their reports properly, and we're gonna review that, because someone doesn't like how tough the cuffs were put on, or something in that scenario. As a citizen of Urbana, I think that we need to say that we support our police officers, and that nurses don't have civilians review them. And I don't think it's appropriate that we're having civilians review our police officers when they don't even know the whole gamut of what a police officer does, from the chief to a street cop. And I think this could handcuff the police officers, and it could potentially put them at danger, and myself and my family at danger, because the police officers may feel like, "Well, what if I put the handcuffs on too tight? Is someone gonna go complain?" Well, while that could be reviewed, and the police officer can say, "Well, yeah, that's, I did, I might have put them on tighter than they would have liked, but I did that for my safety." The next time, are they gonna put them on as tight and risk their safety? I would hope that they wouldn't risk their safety by not putting them on as tight, but I think that this could do that. And I would not ever be in support of this language, especially with subpoena power, but I'm not in support of it at all, so those are some of my reasons. We have the Human Relations Commission for people to go, and I think this is just doubling up something we already have.
Thank you. Other council members? Is there, would anybody like to move this to council? Is there any motion, any amendments? Danielle?
I'd like to move the ordinance, as we have it before us, to council, with recommendation for approval. What's that? Oh, yeah, I'd be happy to include that, that it would be, the language in, so my motion includes that language in 1928 be changed to "willful," "willful or intentional."
I'll second that. The other, one of the other issues that was raised, and maybe, maybe also important to include, direction to staff to clean up any loose ends on this, like the issue of no officer would be under, subject to subpoena, little things like that, you know, any little legal clarifications that need to be made. I'd want a cleaned up copy, in other words, brought to us.
Is, you're asking the motion, I assume?
Yeah. Danielle, do you support that?
I don't, if there's specific things, yes, I haven't heard of anything specific except for that, and it's my understanding that that's in the ordinance, but if we need to add an additional word to say, I think we say, I wish I could find it, it says, "No officer shall appear before the CPRB." If we need to say, "No officer shall appear or be subpoenaed," I would support that, but I generally, I don't want a whole bunch of other changes to this document, but that-
Yeah, I think what you just said works for me.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion would be that we move the ordinance as presented tonight forward to the council meeting, that would be August 6th, with one change being the "willful and wanton," I'm sorry, "willful and intentional" wording, and the second change would be to clarify that no officers are gonna be subpoenaed. Lynn, did you have a question?
I'm not gonna support the motion as it stands right now. I would implore you all to consider, if it is passed, that we change the review date from, I think you had December '09, October '09, to May '09, so that the people who voted this in actually view it. Because, you know, rather than to put that on a potentially different council, I mean, I think at least, let's review the work, and, as a consistent group.
It'd have to be April, not May.
Whatever would get the work done, before any of us might be different on this council.
Be April, April, March, April, yeah.
Earlier.
I would include that as a friendly amendment, and I think that makes a lot of sense. So, we could say to April of, what is it, 2009? 2009? If that's-
Yeah.
Okay, so the mover and secondor agree that in addition, the date would be changed-
One clarification, April 30th, April 1st?
It should be sooner rather than later, just because, the new council members will be sworn in at the very beginning of May. The first council meeting, I believe, which is the first Monday in May, is when the new council members be sworn in. So I think-
There can be last-minute actions taken by the council on that before they're sworn in.
That's correct. So, you know, so-
Have to be the-
I just wanted a clarification.
It should, it should come to a council meeting by, in April of-
Do it March.
Do it March.
Okay.
Good idea.
It should come to a council meeting in March of '06, and then if we need to keep talking about it, we'll have an extra month.
March of '09.
Is that okay with the secondor?
You mean March of '09?
March of '09.
Okay, March of 2009. Thank you very much. Dennis?
Should we consider the wording concerning what penalties are accrued if, concerning the subpoena? In other words, if you're saying that there needs to be a defined penalty, or do we need to address that at this time, or at some future time?
Ron, did you have a particular answer to whether that subpoena power needs to have a?
Yes, I think it does. I, you know, that's what I said the first evening that I was here, is that I feel like it needs to, it needs to have that language. Because my question becomes, unless you're saying that you don't intend to penalize someone for not honoring the subpoena, in which case, then, no, it doesn't need to be there. there.
It seems like, in the past, when we've had ordinances that have things like, you know, that there's going to be repercussions if that ordinance isn't followed, we have addressed the issue of the repercussions in our fine, our schedule of, in our fine schedule. And so it would make sense for us to perhaps address that in the fine schedule, to say, if you don't show up for subpoena, you'd be fined, you know, first time offense, second offense, that's how we have it set up. And I would just like to speak to the fact that a fine is something that I would think would be appropriate, and I think beyond that would probably not be appropriate for this particular body.
Any other discussion with that? Dennis, would you like to make some amendment, or just, do we want to give that to staff as feedback, and they could propose a change in two weeks?
Well, I know that in the case of establishing fines, we sometimes establish the fine at a later date. I mean, we make an amendment to the, you know, the city, the city ordinance concerning fines, and, I mean, that kind of thing could happen later.
Okay, thanks. Lynn?
I guess I would just have to say that if they don't show up when they're subpoenaed, it's going to be hard to get any money out of them. So, I mean, that, to me, that kind of just speaks to my earlier point, but-
Well, of course, usually those, I mean, in those kinds of instances, what happens is the person is, interacts with the city in some other way, through a traffic stop, or some other situation occurs, and they become accountable at a later date. I don't know if that's satisfactory, but I mean, that's often probably the case.
That's, that's policy decision for this august body to make.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done. The motion on the floor, then, made by Danielle and seconded by Charlie, would be to send this to the August 6th council meeting with the recommendation to approve it with three changes, willful and intentional, the wording change, to clarify the issue that police will not be subpoenaed, and to change the review date to March 2009. Any further comments? Would all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries, we'll see that on August 6th. Thank you. Next up tonight, we have the Filo Road Beautification Plan, we'll hear from Public Works staff. Okay, Bill Gray, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. In the memo before you, we tried to distill where money would be spent. The $200,000 was a suggestion for the first fiscal year, first phase. We tried to look at what we thought we had heard as to how we could address beautification along Filo Road. I think it's very important that there would be professional assistance with a landscape architectural firm and a streetlight consultant. In the area of landscaping, we threw some ballpark numbers of trees, $30,000, and no, that's not for one tree. Prairie, thank you. $70,000 allocated for prairie plantings, irrigation in the parkway areas, perhaps some private-public partnership with landscaping and signage, $50,000, benches, trash receptacles, et cetera, $20,000, and then allowance for art, or, and/or banners, $10,000. On the second page, we estimate that there's a fair amount of sidewalk that would need to be replaced. Street lighting, best guess at this point is $120,000 to enhance street lighting in the area, which could take on various forms. Then the resurfacing, $150,000, and then a key and very important point is, is that if we are to maintain this area with very heavily landscaped area and have it look well, then we really need to add staff and equipment to do so. And this is an important thing I want to stress, and this would be, obviously, a budget increase to the Arbor Division. Now, as far as fiscal impacts, or where money could be come from, we did have this portion of Filo Road for, scheduled for resurfacing in 2012. It would be moving it up four years, but we still could do that, and money could be used by deferring Main Street resurfacing, which does need some work if you drive that area for a year, but this would have a ripple effect on, on other projects, and I listed a couple of projects just as a for instance. But that's how we could come up with $350,000, by essentially deferring Main Street from '08 to '09. We could have internal borrowing up to $200,000, and we would just find areas within the CIP to cut over the next five to 10 years, depending on, you know, where we go with that dollar amount. Other projects that we could just defer, not bid out, we have currently out-for bid Beverly Avenue Storm Sur project, North Shore Drive is another project that we have pegged in coming years. Florida Avenue Extension, there's about $600,000 city contribution to Florida Avenue Extension, that's coming out of capital improvement dollars. We could perhaps borrow, and, and look to see if we could borrow from Menards and something like this, they may or may not agree. We do have Yankee Ridge area street lighting, we're going to start that work later this fiscal year, but we could perhaps try to limp along the series lighting in the area for a few more years. And then, lastly, thinking out of the box a bit, if we did vacate streets, maybe this is a, an ED type of, type project, then maybe we could use ED funds if there are streets that are vacated. Those were our best guesses. I think we really can't get into a lot more specifics as much as maybe we'd like to, because in my opinion, we really need a consultant to give us better direction as to what we can or can't do, what we should or shouldn't do. I think generally, we know that some combination of what's listed here needs to be done if we want to beautify the area, but these numbers are very soft numbers, and I think you understand that. One other comment before I stop is, is that in reading some emails this week, today in particular, if we want this to be a more interactive process with consultants, then I would have to tell you that these numbers are way too low for a consultant. And I'm not arguing against it, but what I was planning or intending to do with these numbers was to very quickly hire someone like Wenk to look at it, and sit down and spend some time with them, and have them give us their ideas for the plan. We could see that plan, if we like it, we can go into the design phase, but if we want a little more interactive process, like we're doing with the Boneyard Creek, which is a fine process, I have to tell you, it's going to take much more time and more money to do. And I didn't factor that into this number, I, I did a little more of a street lining process, so I look for direction as to how you'd like for us to do that, but I just want you to know that these numbers are on the low end, if we want a more collaborative community input process.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Before we open the floor here, we have one public, one member of the public, Barack Rosenzweig, who's an incredibly patient person, who's waited three and a half hours now to speak about the Filo Road beautification.
I've been busy.
Oh, good, Harry Potter. Don't tell us the ending, I don't know if anybody dies at the end. Go ahead, Mr. Rosenzweig.
Especially on public TV.
Yeah.
Barack Rosenzweig, I live at 2013 Sheraton in Urbana. In his June 21st memo, Bill Gray mentions putting up new banner art on the existing light posts on Filo Road, and on new poles on the east side of Filo Road. Banner artwork is an ambiguous term, and I believe Bill Gray is using this term to refer to the 16 four-foot repeating canvas strips on Filo Road, all of which say Urbana in large letters. I come here to say that I don't think any of the banners that are now on Filo Road qualify as art. I don't think putting more such banners on Filo Road can be considered beautification. The banners are advertising, they're not art. I think the question of what type of art might be placed on the light poles and on new poles on Filo Road, and the placement of trees and grasses, and the artistic aspects of the beautification of Filo Road, should not be decided only by staff or by council. I come to suggest that there might be input into these issues from the southeast Urbana community. There are many art professionals, as well as concerned devotees in southeast Urbana, and I believe we should have a say in discussing the type of banners or flags that should be mounted, and what material these banners or flags should be made of, where they might be placed, and whether or not there should be advertising on them. I hope we will have a say in what plantings might go on the planting strips, and on other aspects of beautification. Over 200 people came on short notice to the meeting on southeast Urbana last month. I would hope that the council could establish a committee that would discuss and lay out a plan, or interact on a plan for the beautification of Filo Road, and that any plans could be presented to the community, much as the plans for Orchard Downs and the plan for the Boneyard have been presented to the community. At the very least, I hope the council will consider whether, what banners or flags will be mounted, whether there'll be advertising on them, and I think it would be quite appropriate to involve the southeast Urbana community in these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Rosenzweig? Thank you very much. Okay, council members, open the floor for questions or a motion.
I have a comment.
Lynn?
Just wanted to let you know, I spoke to the MTD, and have word from them that they are willing to put two lovely glass with those chrome bus shelters like we have on Lincoln Avenue on Filo Road. So that's positive, and they're willing to do that this, their, this current fiscal year. So I told them that we were planning to do something, you know, maybe we weren't going to do everything this fiscal year, but we were going to do something this fiscal year, and if they could partner with us in that way, they, you know, that would be great. So I asked, I've asked Bill to get in contact with them about location, because there's a lot of things happening on Filo right now, road, right now, in terms of what's going to be built there, and so that, I think some of these bus shelters have to be moved anyway, and so the timing is probably good for replacing them. Also, I, I'm, of course, it's good to get public input, and, but, I, I would not want to see a protracted process around this for, for initial changes, because I think, again, we need to strike while the iron is hot, and continue to encourage the flow of interest that we've got right now. So it might, and I would not want to add additional cost. However, I do think we could maybe have a, a brief but interactive process with city staff, with southeast Urbana folks, and have a, have a meeting, you know, one-time meeting, get people to come, advertise it, and give input. So clearly, let's get some input, but I would not like to see one that would be, you know, stepped over, you know, many months, or else I don't think we'll get what we want out of the money that we spend this year.
Other comments? Dennis?
Well, of course, it's really exciting to think about the beautification of a, a major city street, and the fact that this is a, an area that's, you know, we're getting a resurgence of excitement now and commercial attention. And like, like Lynn says, we have, we have projects that are coming up, and I assume that we can partner with some of the people who are developing, you know, the southern parts of the street. So it seems like we could probably go through this list, and we might be able to divide parts of it for economic expenditure in the next coming fiscal year, and then other things at a later date, maybe the following year. So, you know, I'm just going to say that I have some suggestions. It would seem like if we're going to employ some firm to assist with some consulting, and we have here Phase 1 and Phase 1 of the planning and design, we should go ahead and do that. I don't know if the city staff, since we've already actually beautified the North Lincoln near the expressway, and we've done some beautification of plantings, you know, in the Filo Road area just south of Florida already, and we've actually, you know, made some choices about beautification, street lighting, when we talked about having it relate to the downtown. If, if perhaps we already actually have a plan in mind, and it's merely the execution, or the decision of how far to take, and take it in steps or something on the Filo Road area, I mean, if we've already talked about natural prairie plantings, there can only be so many choices that we have, and we already have a pattern for putting them along the sidewalks, so is it necessary, do you think, to bring in Mr. Gray, outside consultant?
In my opinion, absolutely, yes.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Charlie, and then Lynn.
Yeah, I guess, I agree mostly with what Lynn has said, maybe a little bit more neighborhood inclusion here. We got, we have to have a, and going back to what Dennis said, we have to have a picture of what the whole street's going to look like, I think, from one end to the other. And we need to present that to, you know, some, we need to present some initial ideas to the southeast Urbana neighborhood, and go back, redesign it, and then take it back to them maybe a second time to make sure that we've got all the pieces. So I, I see a, sort of a two-step process with, with the consultant in between. My biggest concern is how to pay for it, which, you know, it's, it's a pretty big ticket, it means we have to balance some things around, we have to, you know, we have to set some priorities, you know, where does this fit in, in our priorities? Because things are happening right there, right now, I think we can justify bouncing a few things around, but what, you know, which, which ones are we going to move? So I think that's a piece of what we want to talk about. And then the other one is, do we want to ask the area merchants, those who own the property from one end to the other, to participate in some way monetarily here? When you look at, when we do stuff downtown, we've got TIF district monies that, that help pay for that. When, when I look at what Campus Town did on the Champagne side, they have a surcharge there for, for, for the, for, for people there, where there is some cost sharing, they help, have to help pay for some of that. So it strikes me that, that property owners along here will benefit from stuff that we do, and there should be some expectation that they pay for some portion of this, because it's going to increase their property values and such as well.
Lynn?
I think that one of the ideas that Bill put forth was the partnering with the property owners with regarding to signage and landscaping, and I think that's an excellent idea, and it's leveraging our money to get more from it, you know, so that if we, you know, and I, I think that could be a part of our this year's plan. Hey, you know, if you'll put up a new sign, we have, you know, we'll look at it, but we'll pay half, you pay half. I mean, hopefully, we could, you know, motivate many property owners to participate in that process. So I think that, that helps to answer that in part. And I think, again, certainly, the, you know, two-step process would be fine, but again, my, my concern is that we get moving and use our window of opportunity well. And as far as money expenditures, I think, you know, all of these are reasonable things to look at. I guess when I look at, you know, prioritizing, it, I mean, it's obviously hard to make a, it's hard to make a decision, but, you know, the first bullet item you have, I mean, it at least only puts that street off one year. I mean, that, that gave me a little encouragement, you know, that we weren't, if we use that money, it's not like it's going to be waiting until 2012, even before that street would be completed, but there may be other options as well.
Robert, and then Danielle. Robert?
I'm in favor of fast-tracking if you can do it, but I don't see that we can circumvent the, the people in terms of what their desires might be along the street. I think they should have input into what's going on, and if you fast-track it, and I think, as you mentioned, somebody mentioned 200 people coming out on, on short notice, I think that's a, an excellent representation for the area, and if they're willing to come out on a short notice, I'm sure that they can come out and, and give you some input on what they'd like to see in, in their, in their area. And to not include them would be a big mistake.
Danielle?
Yeah, I guess to, I support both what Robert and Charlie said about the input by the, the folks in the area, and I actually don't think that it, it needs to slow the process down. I really think we could have meetings this fall, and it would probably be, it's going to take a while anyway, and I think that there's a way of presenting an image of what this would look like that's very appealing, and it would really help for the neighbors to be able to see that and go, ah, that's great, okay. The, I have two concerns, and then a question. I have concern that half a million dollars is a lot. I have a concern about where it's going to come from. I think I need to digest to think about where it could come from. You mentioned a few particulars about what would be put- You mentioned a few particulars about what would be put off, but sometimes if we talk about reducing capital improvement projects, kind of like, well, which capital improvement projects would be reduced? Of course, you know, because that's the trade-off. I do support doing something in the area. I don't support the money from Carl Medical Center used for this purpose. I really think that the people impacted by that change are going to be in that neighborhood, and to take that money and put it in southeast Urbana could really be seen as an affront. It could be seen as an affront, but some of the other issues we could certainly look at. I have a question then, which is, in looking at this, there's a couple of small-ticket items, and then there's a couple of really big-ticket items, and I support the restriping the three lanes and the bike lanes, I think that would help a lot, I think the landscaping would be great. I have a question about the streetlight fixtures, and I guess I need to go over there and drive the space or bike it, my car's in the shop, but is to, what does it mean by upgrading streetlight fixtures, and in particular, is it mostly aesthetics, or does it actually mean adding more streetlight fixtures so that there's more light that's looked lower to the ground and more pedestrian-friendly? Could you explain?
Some of our thoughts are this, and again, this is going to be in collaboration with a landscape architect slash streetlight consultant, but there's been discussion of we need more illumination along Farrow Road, and that quite simply could be removing and putting new fixtures in. The poles would stay, but you could put a more efficient fixture. Those fixtures are probably thirty years old, there's better lighting out there today than there was back then, and for fairly modest dollars, maybe in the order of five hundred dollars or so per pole, you could put a new fixture out there, you know, at fifty poles, and do the math here, it may be twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, okay? Then we thought, if we want accent lighting, there's ways of doing it where you could even attach it at a lower level pedestrian scale to those taller poles with some ornamental cantilever fixture of some type, or it could be a standalone, i.e. like downtown, concrete or steel pole, steel poles are a lot more money than the concrete, but you could do an L-72-type fixture. And, you know, those unfortunately are in the three and four and five thousand dollars apiece, so.
The standalone or the attachments?
No, no, the standalones.
Okay. And then the attached lights, are they cheaper?
They would be much less expensive, yes. Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No problem. So those are some of the thoughts of, we could do decorative lighting, maybe at certain entryways, not, we couldn't do decorative lighting the entire length, that would be, that alone would be a half million dollars. So that's out of the question. So it has to be, again, with the help of a landscape architect slash streetlight engineer, we would look at certain driveways or certain intersections or certain spots, entryway points, what have you, with decorative lighting that could be used, and we would, you know, seek their expertise to help us with those decisions. So we think today, one hundred and twenty thousand should be able to address better lighting and decorative lighting and some combination thereof.
Okay, before we move on, Heather had pointed out that we are close to eleven o'clock. The South clock says we have one or two minutes left, a motion to extend time perhaps to eleven fifteen.
I move to extend time to eleven thirty.
Second.
To eleven thirty. Is that okay with the secondor?
We'll get done.
A little negotiation here.
I was thinking eleven fifteen.
We'll get done, we'll get done.
Okay, is the motion eleven thirty, is that okay with the secondor? Eleven thirty, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll extend time. Let's see, I recognize Lynn and then Charlie.
Okay, I have an idea to push this along.
Oh, good. I did want to comment, I'm speaking with two developers about this process, the one request that they had that was, seemed to be a very important one, was improving the sidewalk. Because the sidewalk is rather, you know, lumpy, and they wanted to make it more pedestrian-friendly, obviously, in order to promote more business to their potential, you know, clients, so I hope we can consider that as a strong one.
Charlie?
Okay, you know, under the fiscal impacts, I don't know if this was intentional or not, there is a certain order here that is very attractive to me. So the question for Bill is, can we get away with postponing the resurfacing of Main between Cottage and Learman for a year?
I mean, the answer is yes. What you're running to is just how much maintenance or aggravation to the public in driving that stretch of street, you know, maybe a little more pothole filling or whatever, but yes, we can postpone it.
Dennis, that's in your ward, isn't it, or is it Heather's?
Dennis.
It is.
It's actually both, I think.
Is it both, Dennis and Heather, or?
Well, to Learman.
Okay. I mean, my suggestion would be to bump that, work this other project in, not worry about the rest of the money at the moment, and see what we can do in terms of partnerships, and then figure out the rest at budget time next year. Would that be sufficient direction for you, Bill?
Yes, I mean, we would want to hire a consultant immediately and move that along so we can get these public meetings in the next, you know, two, three, four months, so we can do it in the winter, so we're ready to go, you know, next spring, summer. I mean, that's a short timeframe, that's what we have to do. But we need to be thinking seriously, I mean, bullet point one is three fifty, and we're talking more than that, so.
Yeah, well, no, as I said, you know, we're talking five fifty, and.
And you have to kind of put aside the sidewalk, the street resurfacing work, that's kind of a CIP activity anyway, it shouldn't be counted against the two hundred thousand in my mind.
Yeah, could we do the sidewalk this year? Is there any way to get that done now, since we really sort of know what needs to be done?
We have to identify a funding source.
Part of this.
Well, no, because that's down the road. We need to find sixty-five thousand dollars this year to do that sidewalk this year.
And that would be it that we'd do this year, just sixty-five thousand dollars?
If it's, you know, we have to design and gear up, the thing is the.
Two hundred thousand this fiscal year.
Lynn, the thing is that the sidewalk is something we know how to do, we know how, you know, regardless of what the plantings are and other things, we know we got to get the sidewalk fixed before you can do anything else.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with moving ahead on that, just, I was hopeful we could do more than sixty-five thousand dollars worth in this fiscal year, but.
Mayor President?
I'd probably defer to Mr. Eldridge. I don't know. I think it's probably a council decision, quite frankly, but.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Would people like to see this at committee again August thirteenth?
I would prefer that.
It's up to the will of the group. Danielle?
In this case, I'd really like to see a motion in writing. I think it was useful to talk about this. I see Lynn's face, I know you want to get moving on this. Would August thirteenth, I mean, could you work with staff to come up with a specific motion that we could see beforehand and comment, you know, be ready to discuss?
Bill wants to say something.
Bill?
Well, you know, next Monday is the fifth Monday we don't meet, and why not try to come up with a motion between now and our council meeting the first Monday in August? Aren't we meeting the first Monday in August?
Yes, August sixth.
So if Councilmember Burns and I and whoever else, why don't we try to develop a motion between now and the next two weeks? So it could be on the agenda?
Yeah, that'd be on the, that would be on the committee meeting, I mean, the council meeting.
On the council meeting.
Council meeting, so we could get an approval, hopefully, then.
And identify a source for the sidewalk.
With this input that we've had right now.
Okay, Heather?
So are we looking for a motion? Because I'm now, I'll make a motion. My motion is that we come back in two weeks to council with a ordinance where the funding's coming from and correct wording for something to be passed that night.
And a timeline.
And a timeline. There we go. That's my motion.
Okay. Lynn, would you like to second that?
I would.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions from council members? Dennis?
Well, I'm just going to put this thought out, that while fixing the sidewalk for sixty-five thousand dollars is probably a useful thing, it's not at all visible, and I was thinking that I wonder if there's something that we can also do on that street that makes it look different, because a sidewalk replacement is merely the same thing happening, but it's just better. And I don't know what aspect of it is that we could do. I would have said, you know, perhaps the thirty thousand dollars on four-inch diameter trees might be a useful start, but I suppose without a real plan, you can't really decide where you want to place them. So, but that would have been a significant visual, you know, improvement that we could probably do very soon, but I'm just saying that, that so far, the one expenditure that we seem to be able to do this fiscal year is pretty much an invisible one.
Any other comments? Bill, I just wanted to give you particular feedback, there were those six funding ideas. I support deferring projects like Main Street, Beverly Avenue, Stormsour, or North Shore Drive. I agree, I would not support waiting on Yankee Bridge School area street lighting, I would not support using money from Carl Street acquisitions. I also wouldn't support internal borrowing in the CIP that would take us five or ten years to pay back before we would get the CIP back up to the level it's at, so I like options one, three, and four, in that order, just as feedback to you as you develop that for two weeks. Any other feedback, comments, anything on this motion? The motion would be that on August sixth, in two weeks, we would see a plan, a timeline, a budget at our council meeting.
Oh, and you may mention of neighborhood input.
That'd be part of it.
Yes, with some limited neighborhood input as part of the process. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously, we'll see it in two weeks on August sixth. We have seven minutes left. Our next item up is ordinance two thousand seven, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, we went till eleven thirty, didn't we? But we don't have to use all that time if we don't need to. An ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana.
We've seen this before, I moved to Senate to Council with a recommendation for approval.
Any questions? Would all those in favor please? Next, I have another one, this ordinance approving my direction from the American State Department of Commerce, Commerce Bureau, for a partial special census. Would you be comfortable?
Yes, I will be brief. You have before you a memo on a partial special census. This is a mechanism that the Census Bureau has created to show population increase since the two thousand census. The advantage of doing this is if you can show a population increase, you can increase your state revenue sharing dollars, you have the fiscal analysis and the process in front of you. It seems that the data bears out that this is a financially positive move for the city to make, but I will mention that there still are some items that need to be researched a bit, as far as we need to identify a city staff member as a project manager, we also need to do more research on office space, office equipment, and coordinating with the census. Other than that, you have the fiscal analysis and the process in front of you.
Charlie?
Quick question. So we're gambling that we'll get the money back, where do we borrow the money in the meantime to pay for this?
Tom?
Indications preliminarily are that we're going to borrow the money from the ED fund and then pay the ED fund back with the additional revenues from the state revenue sharing.
Any other questions? Dennis?
So if we successfully achieve a higher population level, when actually, what year would we actually start receiving benefit from it? I mean, would it be almost, nearly like a year before the normal census would be taken again?
Well, our estimates are that you have to submit the memorandum of understanding to the census by February of oh eight. They won't accept it past that. It takes approximately six to seven months for them to do the enumeration, and then it takes two to three months for the state to recognize the numbers. So we are estimating that we will, at the latest, if we send the memorandum of understanding in February of oh eight, at the latest, we would start seeing additional revenues approximately March of two thousand and nine. We are also estimating that results from the two thousand and ten census will likely be adopted by the state in January of two thousand and eleven. So our estimates are that we will have from March two thousand and nine to January of two thousand and eleven, which is twenty-two or twenty-three months.
But if we start now, wouldn't it be faster?
It would be. I'm using the February two thousand and eight as the drop dead date.
Okay. Other questions? A motion is in order.
Okay, I move that we authorize the mayor to execute, well, that we execute a memoriam, a memorandum of understanding with the United States Department of Commerce Bureau of the Census for a partial special census.
Would it be that we send that to council?
Yes, that we would send that to council with approval.
Okay, seconded by Lynn. Any other questions? Would all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that carries, we'll see that. Thank you, Tom. Next up, we have ordinance two thousand seven oh seven oh eight eight. This is authorizing the mayor to execute a lease with Carl Reisman for a five-year term for two twelve West Green and Morrow Building, and we have Pat Pallotti, who's been patient all evening here, take it away.
The lease expires February two thousand and eight, the tenement life, the dedication of our intent at this point, you know, if he's going to continue in the same place, he has to not put a new lease in place in the life of the dedication.
Any questions? Danielle?
Yeah, I have continued to say that I would like to see things that are around the library, especially things that we control, to support library patrons, things like a cafe or retail shop, et cetera, I think would be a better use at this location. I meant to ask Charlie, actually, if the board, library board, has discussed the ability to put something that would serve library patrons near the library, whether it's this or the Aller Building in the future.
Well, the coffee shop inside the library is doing really well and expanding a bit, the wireless that's there, so that part's doing really well. So the library is more, is going to run out of space eventually, and we know which direction it's designed to go, but that's a twenty-year plan, so five years out, this has no real impact.
Any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd move for a motion with a recommendation.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Heather, seconded by Lynn. Is there any discussion? Those, Dennis?
Was there ever any talk at the library about additional parking, and whether that building was useful to be removed or not for that reason?
You'd gain a few spaces, but the library really needs a lot more than that.
Pat?
I can expand on that just a little bit. This is only a partial lot. The library seized it, purchased it, you know, locked it up, basically when it became available to prevent someone else from doing that, and basically sabotaging the plan for additional parking, but in terms of effectively using it for parking, nothing can happen on this small parcel until another adjacent parcel would also be acquired, and then the parking would make sense, but there's no way to effectively use it as an extension of our parking lot now.
Any other questions? Would all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. We'll see that at council in two weeks. Finally, we have ordinance two thousand seven oh eighty-nine, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section twenty-three one eighty-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on Smith Road at Michigan Avenue. Again, Public Works, we'll hear from Bill Gray.
I think the report's pretty self-explanatory, and just look for motion to send it to council for approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Charlie and a second by Danielle. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That's our last item, we're off next week, it's the fifth Monday, so we'll be back in two weeks, August sixth, to see these items at council. Thank you. Good evening. This meeting is adjourned.